Good evening. Let's, yeah, good, there's the microphone. Welcome to the city council meeting tonight. Today's date is April 12, 2021. It's 5:30 PM. We are at the City Hall Council Chambers at 10 West State Street. And I get to read this notice to the public. It's this. The Mayor and City Council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the items on the agenda. You have to step to the microphones, state your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes so others may be given the opportunity to speak. Speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the Mayor and City Council and not to any councilor specifically, and it's at the discretion of the Mayor and Council to respond to specific questions or comments, or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, would those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome. It's kind of fun to see the number of people that we have back in the room tonight, but we're still accessible by telephone and by Internet, as I understand it. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Goudy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Lottie Huff?
Yes.
Martin?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Weirin?
Here.
Very good, thank you. It's time for item E, Mayor, Council, and Administrative Comments. And the first item is Fire Department Promotion.
Good evening. David Ryerson, Marshalltown Fire Department. So if you remember, we were just here back in February doing this, and due to resignations and retirements in 2021, we're going to turn more people in the Fire Department than in my previous six years. So tonight, we're here to promote firefighter Jason Johnston to the rank of Lieutenant. Jason began his career in Marshalltown Fire Department in March of 2014, and over the past several years has been taking additional classes to prepare himself to promote to the officer ranks. In today's fire service, for many reasons, the number of people that want to step up and actually take an officer's position or leadership position have declined drastically. So because of that, I greatly appreciate Jason's effort to step up and his effort that he has taken to prepare himself for the position. As I told you last time, this is one of the fun jobs of being the Fire Chief, is when you get to recognize employees who promote and take extra effort in preparing themselves. Tonight, we have members of Jason's family here with us. If I could get his mother Connie to step up here.
For those of you at home who are watching the badge be pinned on, please don't draw any blood, I might faint. Very good. Congratulations, Jason, and thank you, family, for being here to support him. We've got an excellent fire department, we've got an excellent police department. It's fun to have these things happen at the city council meetings, and that's a good way to start. Next up is for anybody who is up here at the council or at the city administrator's chair to speak, if anybody has anything to say before we get on to the next item.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Two things. We don't say enough good things, or at least I don't say enough good things, as people know. But I had a resident reach out to me, said he called the pothole hotline number, and he said later that same day, the pothole was fixed in front of his driveway. So I did tell Justin to thank his staff, and I want to thank them publicly at the meeting, that things are working the way they should, and this was on the north side of town, which doesn't get a lot of attention sometimes, but it was a great thing. And then the second thing is celebrating another store opening uptown, rebuilding after the tornado and the dray show. Wax ecstatic records and the used and new record store LPs opened Saturday to a booming business. A lot of out-of-town people came in. It's in the old Appgar Building, for those that don't know. The owner's John Blabom. He had to move his store a block down the street, bought the Appgar Building, renovated it, and got open, and so little victories at a time. So I need everybody to go buy an old record player and go buy some old albums and support the business. So anyway, thank you, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Very good, okay. Onto item F, which is the consent agenda. One of the consulars asked me before the meeting started just now to pull items four, five, and nine from it. And with that is their motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Huff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Very good. Would you read those items for us, then, please?
Yes, approved minutes of the March 22, 2021, meeting in the bill list in the amount of $5,661,717.65. Approved tree trimmer licenses for Sasquatch Tree and Yard Services and Eager Beaver Stump Removal. Approved liquor licenses for Dollar General Number 2019 at 408 South Knights Street. The Spot at 217.5 North 13th Street. And La Corretta Mexican Restaurant at 308 Iowa Avenue East. Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the awarded contract for the demolition of the Airport Terminal and Hangar Project in the City of Marshalltown in the amount of $45,500. Resolution approving contract change order number one for the Riverview Park Stormwater Pump Station Project, SMW 20001, an increase of $35,868. And resolution to approve federal ACRGP funding for the Marshalltown Municipal Airport.
Very good, thank you. Those are carried. Now we would go to item four, if there is anybody who'd like to move for the passage of that resolution.
I move for approval.
Second.
I guess for the record, I should have our temporary clerk read what that resolution is.
Yes, resolution authorizing the purchase of property at 610 West Nevada Street. And can I ask who seconded that?
I think Gabe was the second and Gary was the third.
Weirin was the motion. Who was the second?
Either Bill or Gabe. We both said it.
Okay.
I know we look alike, but...
Okay. Ready for discussion on this one, then?
Yes, can we get just a quick?
Yes, this was one of the buildings that was identified as part of our dangerous and dilapidated building program, and working with the owner, as we've done in some other cases, it is cheaper to offer the $2,000, which is a previously authorized amount, to purchase a property versus taking it through the legal system when it is free and clear of liens.
Any questions or comments from the council before I invite public comment or questions? Let's start the clock and go 10 seconds.
The lines are unmuted.
Mark Eaton, 1007. Just to clarify, Jessica answered the question. I was concerned if there was a policy for the amount that we're spending since this property hasn't paid taxes in the last two years, and so it'll be up for a tax sale in the next year, and we're spending taxpayer money on it, and the prices for doing this seem to be all over the place. So I just, she clarified, there's a $2,000 policy. Thank you.
Any other comment? Actually, the mic was open for 10 seconds. Let's take a vote.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Huff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good. Onto the next item. Would you read that resolution for us before I call for a vote?
Yes, resolution supporting the City of Marshalltown Housing and Community Development Department to apply for the Older Adults Home Modification Program Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
I move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Discussion.
So we just want to update on this one. I'm not sure if there's any specific questions. This is a new grant program that the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, has initiated this year, and it would allow for us to conduct what they consider minor home modifications to allow our senior population to age in place and stay in their home. So they are not significant home renovations, but it could include things like grab bars or reducing slip-trip fall hazards, door handles, temporary ramps, things of that nature. So not major home improvement, but small modifications. The contract term would be a three-year term if awarded, and the maximum award amount is 1.25 million. And so it would have staffing requirements. We would be required to work with an occupational therapist to do some assessment as part of that project, and then we can pay for the items and the labor associated with making the modifications. So it's something that is new that we are looking to. They do have a, where at least 50% of the awards will go to more considered rural areas, and so we feel that we have a strong position in being able to apply for that. Will be very competitive, I expect, so we will see how that goes. There's no matching requirement as part of the grant, so that's always a nice thing to try for. It's due May 4, and so we'll be working to submit that if approved here this month.
Any consular questions or comments for having taken this off the consent agenda?
Your Honor, comment here.
Yes, sir. Ms. Martin.
As a former grant writer for the College and Red Cross, I firmly come down on the side of the city, applying for grants for which we are capable of handling and that fit our plan, and I applaud our efforts, our joint efforts here in making application. I would say that we compete well with Tallahassee and Newport and so on to do that, and I have no compunction about applying, and I really applaud your efforts.
Thanks, Mr. Martin. By the way, I'm having trouble hearing you, so if you can get a little closer to your mic, that'll help me, anyway. Anyone else? Mr. Thompson, I think you were ready to speak.
Michelle, when would you find out about this?
I believe that they are anticipating awards to begin in July of this summer. So now, you know, having said that, I've worked with HUD for many years, and we know that sometimes their intentions of getting things announced and in order don't always hit up exactly as planned, but that's their goal, it sounds like, is to this summer, have awards begin.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
You bet, thank you. Any other consular who have any questions or comments? If not, let's open the mic for the obligatory 10 seconds.
The lines are unmuted.
Mark Eaton, 1007, South 10th Avenue. Does 100% of this grant money go to the elderly or the, or does some of that go to pay and fund housing and community development staff? Also, I think it's really good that this was pulled off the consent agenda so everyone could hear about it, because I'm sure everyone doesn't read the consent agenda. Thank you.
Just to kind of, in summary, yes, the applicants, in order to be eligible, would have to be senior members within the household, which I believe is over the ages 62. I'd have to confirm that, but, so the applicant itself would have to be eligible as a household to have somebody, a senior, in the household. The grant funds do cover the cost of staff administration and other administrative costs associated with conducting a grant. So from things like postage and paper to travel expenses, the occupational therapist that would have to be hired to do assessments, all of that would also be covered by the grant. The only real in-kind type of contributions that we usually see with this type of grant is our office space that we're utilizing as a whole as a city. We can sometimes count that as matching funding. And then time spent sometimes by our legal counsel or HR director in hiring process and things like that, which is usually minimal amounts as needed. So the majority of activities would all be covered by the federal shares of the grant.
Michelle, you mentioned temporary ramps. Can permanent ramps be built also with this?
We'll have to investigate that. They really focused on temporary, and I think mainly because permanent structures often are going to exceed the maximum allowed per household. But it sounds like there are some caveats, if that's, you know, a possibility. You just have to look at it as funding. So they really focused on more temporary items under the descriptions.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Other consular questions or comments? Let's open the mic on this. We already did open the mic on this one, didn't we? What people who don't familiarize themselves with the consent agenda and maybe don't know what goes on at the council meetings over the years may not appreciate is the millions of dollars that Michelle and her department has been able to bring into Marshalltown to help remediate the lead problems that we have and other housing problems. So my head is off to her. Let's go ahead and take a vote on this one.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Huff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
If you would, Madam Temporary Clerk, read number nine, resolution. We can call for a vote on it.
Yes, a resolution supporting Trails Inc. in their efforts to pursue funding to complete the Iowa Rivers Edge Trail in Marshall County.
Anybody want to move to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Isom.
Second.
Ms. Weirin, thank you. Let's have discussion.
Jeff Snyder, 1906 Stratford Lane. I'm also the president of Trails Inc., and I would like to ask the council here to approve this. It will help us greatly in some upcoming grant processes. The more community support we have, the better, and it's a large factor in both. We think we can get a substantial amount of federal and state money that's already been spent, just has yet to be divvied out.
Thank you, Jeff. Let's open the mic for public comment.
Mark Eaton, 1007, South 10th Avenue. We have a 28E agreement between the city and Trails Inc. that says we won't spend any taxpayer money on trails. This has been a kind of a bone of contention over the years that I've watched the council I'm not sure why we need a special resolution unless somewhere I missed that we abandoned the 28E agreement. We have that anyways, so. And it'd be nice if sometime the council asked for accounting of the money and what we've spent on it and time and things like that, and what we've been repaid for, because there's some discrepancies there, too, I think. Thank you.
Let's leave the mic open for another eight seconds. That took two. Thank you, and let's go ahead and mute the mics. I think I'm in a position to answer that because I helped incorporate the Trails Inc. Board in the first place and was on the city council at the time that the arrangement was made. And at that time, the deal was, the 28E agreement was, would not obligate the city to make any payments or donations. It did not prohibit the city from making donations, and what Trails Inc. has found, and we appreciate Jeff Snyder taking over as president of it, is that the grants are much more easily sought and received if they get support both from the city and from the county. So far, I think there have been two, I know of two, maybe three attempts to get the county to financially contribute to help get these millions of dollars of grants out there. The city has been very helpful, on the other hand, making some of those grants. So with that said, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Well, Your Honor, if I may first?
You may, sure.
This may be a question for Jessica, and just a clarification for taxpayers. Could you briefly explain why, like the one earlier, the HUD grant for housing, you know, for elderly? Why do we even need to have these on the agenda and like this one? Why are some on the agenda? Why can't staff just apply for grants without bringing them to the city council?
So this one is very different than the other ones, but typically, if there is a commitment of resources or of staff that is not budgeted, that's where this would come through. This actually ties into goal four of our strategic plan in saying that we have a specific task that says we'll support Trails Inc. in their fundraising. This does not commit the city to doing anything. This just simply says that we're in support of Trails Inc. raising funds for the completion of the Iowa Rivers Edge Trail in Marshall County. So this is a very different resolution than sort of other ones, so.
So I just want to make sure everybody understands that whenever we get awarded a grant, that obviously there's city staff and time in overseeing that grant, therefore it has to come to us first.
Yeah.
The city staff can't just go out and apply for every grant that's out there.
I would say that there's kind of two ways to look at it. It's either coming before you on the front end, especially if there's a resolution of support requirement, but there's also oftentimes where agreements are required on the back end. So you might see it on the back end as well, depending on what it was or if there's a tight timeframe. But generally, I would say all staff is in communication with the mayor and council if there is a reason to apply for a grant due to a short deadline or something unknown, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of why applications were coming through us, you know? Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Martin, I got an indication, if you'd like to speak to this as well.
Just to reiterate.
Into the mic, though, please.
Just to reiterate, it's important that the council know the direction and the purpose of these grant possibilities so that it fits with our overall goals, our strategic plan, and so on. So it's very important that when these grants come up, that they run through the council so that we understand the purpose, direction, and commitment of such grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Lottie Huff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you. That covered, before going on to item G, motions, I was able to meet, just very briefly, to say hello to some scouts outside. I can tell from looking around the room that we have several in uniform, and I'm remiss that I didn't invite them if they wanted to be part of the opening part of the meeting. If you'd like to make any comments and introduce the scouts here, that would be fine. If you don't want to do that, we can go on to the next item. Okay, we'll go on to the next item. Thanks for coming in. Good to have them here to see how this works, if it doesn't dissuade them from running for city council in about 10 years. Let's go on to item G, those motions. Would you read the first one, please?
Motion to approve five-day liquor license for PALS for Blessing of the Bikes on May 8 of 2021.
Any motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thanks for sizing. Thank you. Lottie Huff on the second. Discussion.
I can just share that this is a liquor license request that was received through the city clerk for a transfer of the PALS, which I think is the Powashik Animal Rescue Shelter, to transfer to Riverview Park for the May 8 Blessing of the Bikes.
Is this kind of an annual event that we've had and approved every year?
Less COVID, yes.
Thank you, yeah. Any questions or comments? I don't anticipate comment on this one, but raise your hand to any consular if you think we need to open the mics on this one. Okay.
The mics are open.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Huff?
Yes.
Thank you. Unable, read the next motion.
Motion to approve new liquor license for supermarket Aborata Via Chowata Corporation.
That's easy for you to say.
I move for approval.
Second.
Very good. Discussion. It does speak for itself?
It does.
Let's open the mics.
The lines are open.
And let's vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Huff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. Item H has reports, the first one, which is the Marshawn Police and Community Team Impact Update.
Good evening. Mike Tupper, Marshawn Police Department, and David Hicks from YSS of Marshall County is here with me tonight, and we're giving our first update regarding the Marshawn Police and Community Action Team, and we're going to try to come back quarterly, so we'll be back in July, to talk about how things are going. So David's going to tell you about all the great work. I just wanted to share a couple of quick comments. So first of all, I want to say that my thoughts and prayers are with Sergeant Jim Smith and his family in the Iowa State Patrol after what tragically happened in Gurnee County over the weekend. And what you might not know is last week, three Iowa police officers tragically died. Trooper Jim Smith was shot and killed while he was trying to carry out his duties, his lawful duties. Two other police officers killed themselves in Iowa last week. And if you follow my social media, you'll see that I frequently share stories of police officers who are ambushed and attacked and shot. It's happening more and more. Our cops in this country and in Iowa have a very dangerous job. And then I saw what happened in Minnesota yesterday, and horrific. That officer, in my opinion, for whatever it's worth, you know, the chief came out today, the officer made a mistake, made a huge mistake, absolutely. And that person will be held accountable, I'm sure criminally and civilly, and that person will not be a police officer anymore. I hope the communities, our community, I'm not really concerned about, but I hope our country doesn't hold every cop to account for the mistakes of that officer in Minnesota, but that seems to be what we do now. And what's that got to do with impact? Okay, it has everything to do with impact. We're asking our cops to do too much. I told you that last September. I've been streaming that from the mountaintops for 17 years that I've been a police chief in Iowa, the last almost 10 here now. We're asking our cops to do too much. Two cops killed themselves last week. I don't know why, but I can, I have a lot of guesses. We're asking our cops to do too much. And then you see what happens up in Minnesota, and tragic mistake, and it immediately devolves into rioting. We can't have any community discussions in a lot of these places. Why? Because there's a lack of transparency between law enforcement and the community many times. There's a lack of a relationship between law enforcement and the community many times. That can't happen in any community. And in the 10 years that I've been your police chief, we've worked our collective tails off to make sure that we have a relationship with our community, and we try to be transparent. And certainly, we're going to make some mistakes, and we'll hold ourselves accountable for those mistakes, but we have to have strong relationships with the community. There's lots of ways to build those relationships, and we're looking for every highway and avenue and roadway to do that. Impact is one of those roads, and it's working. We're about 70, 75 days into this program being live, and David's going to share some success stories, but it's working. We're making progress. We're making great progress. It's a program that I'm very proud of. I'm very proud of the work that David and his team are putting in. I'm extremely proud of our cops and how they've embraced it. I was a little worried, you know, the cops might not be all that excited about working with social workers. Now I have cops coming to me and saying, hey, this is a great program, but what about at 3:00 AM? Because they go home at 11 o'clock, and we need them. It's working. Here's my fear. We're three and a half months, almost, you know, four months, because... We're three and a half months, almost, you know, four months, because April's going to be over soon, into a 12-month project, and in talking to David and in talking to our leadership team at the Marshawn Police Department, we need more time. We need more time to see what this program can do and how it can evolve and what we can do with it, and we need more time to collect data so that we can go after some big grants down the road to keep it going permanently. So there's still a lot of things that we have to learn. There's still a lot of tweaks that we're going to make to the program, but here's what I know. It's working. We're being proactive as a community. We're building better relationships in our community, and we're doing something positive. And we're doing what the community wants us to do. If you've been listening to any to our country over the last year, they want programs like this. We're doing it. So I'm excited about it. I'm passionate about it, and I'm excited to hear what David has to say, but I just want you to know that we need to find a way to keep it going. And 12 months isn't going to be enough. So I'll turn it over to David Hicks at this point.
Thanks, Steve.
David Hicks, Director of YSS of Marshall County. I should make a note, never to follow Chief Tupper in his words, because the bar gets set pretty high, and let's let's admit that we can't always reach that goal. So I want to thank Chief Tupper and his team. I want to thank the city council for giving us this, giving us an opportunity. You know, back in September, October, when we were charged with this project, we were given $150,000 to to meet the needs of the community, meet the needs of law enforcement, meet the needs of social services, and I think we're getting there, as Chief said. So when we receive these dollars, we put together kind of a community team of what this program's going to look like, because there isn't one other like it in the state of Iowa, and we had to make this specific for Marshalltown. We can't copy what Oregon's doing or anyplace else. This is a Marshalltown program. It's Marshalltown dollars. So the goals we set forward with this were to reduce unnecessary arrests in order to keep people from re-entering the criminal justice system. We wanted to reduce unnecessary use of force, disorderly conduct charges, or interference with official act charges. We wanted to reduce unnecessary trips to the ER. We want to increase law enforcement time to be spent on criminal issues, public safety, and law enforcement duties. And we really want to support our law enforcement partners with training and support, and Lord knows they need that. They need that. And maybe most importantly, provide social services to the public at the right time and the right location. So back in January, when this kicked in, Ryan Keller is our senior therapist at YSS of Marshall County. He's kind of the program director. We hired two community advocates, Autumn Drewlow and Darcy Anderson. So in January, they begin doing ride-alongs with the police to see how the police operations work, to embed themselves in that team, to get to know kind of the the language, and more importantly, build that trust and partnership that's going to be needed when there's times of crisis. So both Darcy and Autumn work 10-hour shifts, so they alternate. So they're easily doing, you know, noon to 10, 2 to midnight. And part of the research we did in trying to figure out how this is going to work is we detailed statistics that the police department had, the frequency of calls, the amount of calls they get, when they get the most calls. Friday night seems to be the the hot night, so we have both advocates working Friday nights just to meet the demand. So the process of how this works, and and Darcy and Autumn began February 1st on-call working with the with the police department. So a call comes into the 911 or the communications center. Law enforcement is dispatched to that location, and they assess assess the safety issues. Safety is is the number one thing with our social workers, and we appreciate our law enforcement team making sure it's safe when we go out there. So law enforcement radios the the community advocates to respond. The advocate responds on-site and completes a voluntary assessment with the family. Again, this is a voluntary program. So we determine the most urgent needs. We get the demographics. We get their strengths, needs, abilities, preferences, family supports, brief medical history, cultural, social supports that are in place. We develop a safety or support plan depending on the nature of the call, and we work with that individual and their family to make sure their support's right there. And then we do a warm handoff. And by what we mean by that is if there's a specific need they have, we're going to connect them to a social service agency outside of YSS with certain expertise. We're going to make sure they get there, make an appointment, follow up with them to make sure we just don't help them out at 10:30 at night and say, hey, 8:00 in the morning, go check out this agency, and then the ball gets dropped. So we do follow-ups with these families. So we do a short-term case management period that really reinforces our need to help them, but to also hold them accountable because of the county law enforcement or whoever else for support or services, we want to make sure we get their needs met and they follow through. And the short-term case management piece is really, really important, because before law enforcement would say, you know, maybe you should call Sutusi or mental health or YSS in the morning. In the morning, nothing happens. So we have staff who will go back out and meet with those individuals. So being in the field in February and March, we've got some statistics. We've had 42 calls that have yielded services to 60 people. So sometimes those calls yield more than one service. It may be a a call about a family dispute, but it turns out there's a severe mental health issue. It could be a substance abuse issue going on that involves a brother, a child, a parent. So it involves a lot of people. So of those 60 people served in that two-month time, 29 listed mental health as their primary concern. That's about 50%. And in going into this, we thought that mental health is a significant issue, and it has, and and the statistics are proving so. So half the calls we received that we responded were mental health-related. 23% noted family conflict as a problem. Seven were homeless. We had three substance abusers, and then the numbers kind of break out a little bit smaller after that. I think maybe the most exciting statistic I see is out of the 42, 39 accepted services from Impact. 92% wanted us to be there, participated in the service, and are following through. So I think we're saving lives. So as we go back and we kind of look at, you know, the goals we're supporting and goals we want to achieve, keeping people out of the criminal justice system, keeping them out of the ER, keeping them housed, keeping them safe, services at the right time, right place. And there are barriers. We aren't, we don't have enough funds to be 24 hours yet. That's a goal. It's a barrier we've seen. Homelessness is a is a big issue. It's another barrier that we have trouble reaching, but we're working on that. We have had everything from a, you know, our first call was from a 13-year-old that if if you saw the TR a couple of weeks ago, that that detailed her story. We've had an adult male now getting inpatient substance abuse treatment. He's been refusing, 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 but maybe Impact said the the magic words, and he's trying it. May not be successful, but he's trying it. So we have parents who need support for a grown child, so we're not only dealing with 13-year-olds, we're dealing with adults as well. So anybody in the community could be one incident or issue away from the police being called an impact, having an impact in their lives. So again, I want to say thank you for supporting what we've done the last three months, two months in the field, and we're already almost halfway through April. It's amazing the stories we're hearing. We'll share a lot more with you as we as we kind of move along. But again, I appreciate your support, and, you know, we can't help Chief Tupper without being right there alongside the the police department. We can't do that without your support, so we appreciate that. Love to answer any questions you might have.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Hey, David, congratulations to you and Chief Tupper and the staff, both your staffs. Question is, talk a little bit about the other agencies, because obviously these 39 people that did request help.
Yeah.
And you did follow up.
Yep.
Give me some, give us some of the feedback from the other agent, the other supporting agencies that you've partnered with.
Yeah, so it could be Center Associates for Intensive Mental Health Treatment, could be Central Iowa Community Services that has kind of a longer intensive mental health program, could be Sutusi with substance abuse. So everything from Access, who does the domestic violence, sexual assault support. So we've already partnered with them, so kind of the handoffs are a little bit easier because we have that relationship. So last week, we met with school social workers, so we can kind of bring in that aspect as well. If we're dealing with parents or having a family conflict, and they're school-aged children, and we know they're under duress, we can get a release to go back to talk to the school to say, hey, visited with some students of yours last night, they're now homeless, or whatever the issue is. So we have school staff who are able to reach back and and support them as well. And, you know, we do visit the ER with folks, because they show up at the ER, police are called, and then we show up as well. So we're working with the medical community, along with juvenile court, adult probation, agencies that sometimes we don't really work with very often, especially adult probation and the criminal justice field. So we're getting to know them pretty well.
And I understand you've worked with one of the city departments already? The library?
Yes. Yeah. We had been working in the library before Impact, because just hearing from the library staff, we knew that people were going on going there and they needed assistance. So before COVID, back in the day, we would have staff there once a week for about an hour, hour and a half to deal with whatever was going on in the library, just to to kind of help out. We didn't charge for that. We just knew that there was issues going on at the library. But yeah, library is definitely, not necessarily a hotspot, but really a go-to place where families can get support, and we want to reach families where they are.
Well, congratulations again.
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
A great report. Two things I'd like to comment about. YSS has been a great neighbor next door here. I can't wait until COVID is over and we get to have another open house where more people can see what you've done with the space over here. That's just phenomenal. And and second, I put this on my mayor's Facebook page. In the 10 years I've been on this council, I've never seen anything that was more interesting, intriguing, and gratifying to me than Gary Thompson's motion to invest enough money in this to get it started, I mean, jump-started off the ground big time and have a unanimous vote up here. I'd never seen anything like that before, probably went through the rest of the year when I hoped to be able to turn the scabble over to somebody else. And so it's really gratifying for us up here to see what you've done with it so far, so thank you.
And I've been with YSS 25 years, and without a doubt, it's it's the greatest program that I've ever been able to go from an idea to to Impact, hence the name. And we have other communities reaching out to us saying, how are you doing this? We want to do this as well. So we're kind of blazing the trail here for maybe what other communities can do. So again, thank you for your support.
The third thing I wrote on my note here that I forgot to mention was template and prototype. I'm assuming, I've been banking on the fact that your program is going to be the template and prototype for the rest of the state, so keep up the good work on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was fun for me and and the rest of us up here. That's just gratifying is the best word I can think of. Let's go on to resolutions. Would you read the first one, please?
Yes, Resolution approving contract change order number one for the Sixth Street Softball Parking Lot Improvements Project PRK 210011, an increase of $75,182.63.
Entertain a motion to approve it first.
So moved.
Second.
Let's go with Goudy on the second. There's a tie, and discussion.
Jeff Hubbard, Parks and Rec Director. Jay Cook, our civil engineer, put this out for bid, and Construct was a low bidder to, and we kind of split the project up into half, thinking that that's what we had funding for, and the bids came in a lot lower than we expected. So this would allow us to do from the MFL side all the way to the east side of the Center Diamond, so about 2/3 of the parking lot would get done under this change order.
I remember when this first came to the council, we we had some questions about, hey, couldn't we do a little bit more? And so apparently.
More in the discussion to talk about the rest of it.
Right. And then I know in the materials that were attached here, too, apparently we have another, well, we have several, I know, for the summer, but one big one coming up where there was a fear that it might interfere with that bringing all these people into town.
Yeah, there's a 4th of July tournament, and Construct still thinks they can finish the whole thing by the June 30th date, and if not, we have backup plans to kind of keep them off-site during during that big tournament.
Sure. Let me open up to questions and counsel, questions and comments by the council first. And if none, let's open the mics for 10 seconds.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Thank you. Roll call.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Ladihov?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. Unable, let's go on to the next resolution.
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the award of contract for the Pickleball Pocket Park Project in the city of Marshalltown, being Project PRK 20002, in the amount of
Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Jeff Hubbard, Parks and Rec Director. Again, another project that came in under budget, so we're excited about that. Engineers estimated it at $175,000, and pillar construction was in under that at 152. I did reach out to the city of Carroll. Pillar adjusted a pickleball court for them last summer, and they did a great job with that project, so we're excited to be working with them to finish that and kind of connect the Coliseum to City Hall and Parks and Rec.
Very good. Council questions or comments?
Your Honor?
Mr. Thompson.
Jeff, I just want to clarify, this is for the entire project minus the art part, the art phase of it, right? The, the, Jessica, what'd you call it?
The sidewalk poetry?
Yeah, the poetry, yes.
Yes, there is an additional $3,000 grant that we received from the Rebuild Marshalltown Fund to pay for the artist, and then it sounds like we might not have had the best cost estimate when we were thinking about the stamps, so we have a little bit more discussion, but I do think the stamps will exceed kind of what we had planned.
I just want to clarify that when this comes back for the art part, that that people understand that we we know there's two separate parts of this.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Jessica. Thanks, Your Honor.
Sure, you bet. Other questions or comments? Unmute, please.
The lines are unmuted.
Roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Ladihov?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Very good that carried. Before we go on to the next resolution for Mother's Day, I'm going to have to get my wife one of those pickleball paddles. We've got to learn that sport. It's so popular. All right, next resolution, please.
Resolution approving preliminary master plan for the Glenwood Park PUD.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Michelle?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. So the Glenwood Park area is kind of, really runs the part we're talking about from Sixth Street, South Sixth Street, to South 12th Street, kind of along the ponds and where Merrill Hibbs comes through, and bring up here the the actual graphic. So this is zoned PUD, Planned Unit Development, is the zoning classification that we have for this for this area, and that was established many years ago now and has changed over over the years as we have developed and ownership interest has changed and things have have morphed as it's gone along. So whenever we have a developer that's looking at a portion of the property, we always do try to make sure that the entire area is still maintains a certain flow, even though we know that developer may only be looking at a certain section. We encourage that whole dynamic to make sure that it still makes sense, that streets can connect, that lots can develop, and we don't leave something just kind of ending, since it is all one Planned Unit Development. So with this particular situation, we have developer moving forward on a portion of this property, and your next, well, you've got a few items, but the next two specifically relate to zoning. We wanted to ensure that the entire PUD is still cohesive there. The area that is primarily being discussed for current development is north of Hibbs, for current development is north of Hibs, in between South 8th Street, which is already built, and the Village Cooperative on the west side. So, we're talking about connecting the extension of Noelway Drive, as well as some new street infrastructure that would go east-west. And so, creating residential lots within that for single-family development. So, this remains consistent with the PUD. Typically, as long as we're seeing the similar or not more than a 10% increase in density, we don't need to go through public hearing processes with the PUD change. It just goes through the Planning Commission and then to the City Council for review and action. And so, the Plan Zoning Commission did review this item and recommended approval of the PUD. And so, that's why we're here before you on the resolution for the Planned Unit Development Classification, to just kind of outline those uses and layout.
Thank you. Council questions or comments for Michelle?
Question, Your Honor.
Ms. Martin.
Michelle, I do understand the object of a PUD, and I do understand the plan. I'm just wondering how much thought was given to the establishment or connecting to trails and/or green space in this area?
Yeah, so we certainly had a lot of conversation back and forth about the area and development and what open space. At one point, we did have some concepts that went to the commission at first that included some general open space. That was later determined that the best fit for that would be to extend those lots. And so, we got some deeper lots in here. The terrain and topography in this area does have some challenges with regards to maybe like what we would consider park space or even for trail development. And so, we're cognizant of that as the developer and their engineer have put forward some of that. Throughout the area, there would be sidewalk, you know, along the streets. We don't have any specific trail identified in this portion of the PUD or separate green space. The city does currently have a parcel, I think this one is our parcel currently, correct? And so, we do have the idea that at some point, there would be some space development that would happen with regards to park space as things develop out further. The school has the other parcel here. And so, as a whole, on this larger concept, we do envision that there would be some type of creation of space for combination school and park systems. What exactly that will look like, I don't think we'll have until we get a little bit further down in this development.
Other questions or comments? It does look like, if we could move the map just a little bit to the south, which I, oh, we can. There are the ponds that...
We do have the ponds there.
That people can walk around, at least.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Other council questions or comments? Else, we'll open the mics.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead, ma'am.
Oh, hi. This is, yes, hi, this is Karen Berger calling, and I live out here on West Merle Hibs Boulevard. My husband's here with me. I have been seeing the surveyors out there. They're working out there this week. They were out here in the bitter cold, working, doing preliminary survey work. I have a few questions about the whole process. I think I heard approximately 35 single-family homes, five duplex kind of homes, 46 cottage homes. Is that still what is being planned for this area?
I can share, we're in the process of putting the development agreement together, and there'd be four cottage home lots that are kind of there on the Sixth Street, which could be multifamily. And then, with the remaining lots that are part of this, what the developer is looking to do, we come up with a total of 42, which would be single-family.
Forty-two. Okay. Do you, so there's a developer? Is there one company that's the developer for this, then?
Right. There is a single developer that's doing the land subdivision. I don't know that any decisions have been made as to the actual building construction of homes. This is more on the development side of the actual layout of the subdivision work.
Okay, so, yes, so that was my question. You don't know if it'll be a builder or multiple builders then who will come here and work? You don't know that yet?
Correct. I don't have that information at this point. At this time, I think it likely could be multiple builders. The developer is not looking to be the builder of the development.
Okay. And then, I have another question. Do you have an idea of a timeline? Like, will they start putting roads through and putting in sewers and gas lines immediately? Or is there a timeline you have for that?
And I think we may have Trent on the line. Trent, feel free to jump in at any point. This preliminary process, what the stage of this is allowing for that infrastructure work to commence following this approval. And so, certainly, if things are, I think as everybody would hope, and they're able to start their final design work and things that we would see improvements be made here, hopefully this season. But this is a process where we have a preliminary process that gets approved. Typically, infrastructure is then installed, and then we see a final plan come back to the council and the commission after that work is done, so that lots are then created and to be sold.
Okay, okay. I appreciate all your information. And do you have any idea of what kind of value these homes will be placed at? You know, the selling cost, any idea what kind of homes they're going to be?
We don't know who the builder would be. No. So, we don't have that information.
Okay. All righty. Okay, I appreciate all the information, and I appreciate being able to ask these questions. I thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Mr. Thompson, yes.
Mrs. Berger, did you give your address for the record, please?
Oh, yes. 812 West Merle Hibs Boulevard.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. I forgot to ask.
Thank you.
Meredith Miller. Could I speak at this point?
The chair recognized, the mayor recognizes Meredith Miller.
Meredith Miller, 2512 Noelway Drive. And in one of the previous documents that McClure Engineering provided, where it gave a, oh, I guess it was five, six paragraph outline or scope of the project, it talked about restrictive covenants to be put in place. And is there, are there any definitions of restrictive covenants at this point, such as minimum square footage of the homes and setbacks and that sort of thing?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development. At this point in the phase of development, typically, we do not see the restrictive covenants coming forward. Usually, the restrictive covenants are not something that the city enforces. I want to make sure that that's understood. Typically, they will come forward with the final plat subdivision, portion of the subdivision, when things go to get recorded. Those restrictive covenants get recorded with the property. So, we don't typically see those at this preliminary stage. I'm sure if the developers may be working on those at this point, but that's not something that we see as part of this approval process.
One follow-up question, if I can.
You may.
At one point, one of the city councilmen, Mr. Gowdy, I believe, spoke to me that said the, what he had heard at that time was the intent for the homes in the area would be where size and structure would be consistent with what already exists. Do you know if that is still the case?
Since, again, since we don't have actual builder, and we're just working on the overall layout and concept, we don't have that kind of detail as to what would be built. If these lots are made available for purchase, provided the structures meet with the minimum setback requirements and things of that nature, that would be what the city is enforcing. You know, I'm certain that everybody's looking to get the highest values homes that they can when they're developing and be consistent with the neighborhood. But that's not something that we're specifically setting any kind of minimum standards on, other than setbacks, which is common throughout the zoning ordinance.
And just to follow up, I guess, any definition of covenants would be available to the community when the final plat is approved?
Typically, restrictive covenants are recorded against the property and available at the county recorder's office. And so, if we have those available at the time of the final plat, we would include that information as part of the final subdivision plat process, and then it would be posted as part of our packet.
So, just for clarification, then, so those final covenants, they would be visible to the city council. So, when they approve the final plat, there's a definition of understanding of what the construction in the neighborhood would look like. Would that be correct?
So, the covenants would be included. However, they typically are not reviewed, you know, as part of our process, but they're included with that subdivision as something that gets recorded. A developer is not required to put covenants in place on any development. So, that's something that we sometimes see, we sometimes don't, just because it's not something that is required. But if they supply that as part of the recording, it would be included in the packet. What we ask the council to look at is the plat itself, the drawing, including the lot layout and design of the subdivision.
So, the council's responsibility, and correct me here, I'm just searching here. So, the council's responsibility is to look at the final plat with regard to lot sizes and the number of lots, but they don't have any visibility as to what the type of construction other than single residence definition would actually occur. Is that correct?
Generally speaking, yes. With the Planned Unit Development Classification, we look at these overall layouts and the use dynamics. Typically, we don't get into what I'd consider design standards unless we're talking about higher densities, usually is when we start to look at a design standard type of criteria in a PUD. So, usually, a single family, when lots are able to be built, custom, you know, build designs and those kind of things, we don't get into the details because that's just information that's not available at this early stage of things.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thanks for your input, Mr. Miller. Anybody else on the...
This is Trent.
Go ahead, Trent.
Yes, this is Trent, the engineer of record. Hopefully, I can clear up some of the questions tonight. Michelle did a great job speaking on, kind of summarizing our project. So, I'll just do a brief recap, and then I'll address Karen's and Meredith's questions. So, essentially, yes, this is amendment to a kind of a master plan. That's from 2007, with just minor adjustments to one road alignment. There used to be a third road that went north-south, just east of the Village Cooperative. And like Michelle said, there is significant grade in the area. If you've driven by the site, I'm sure you're all aware of this. And constructing a road right there just wasn't feasible in Iowa's, you know, climate and Iowa standards. So, we just reconfigured that to get the road to continue connectivity. We relocated the road kind of east-west on top of the hill. So, we don't, we only have to go up the hill one time. The, as far as timeline goes, we're in conversations with contractors as of last week for preliminary bids. Plans, I would imagine, construction documents are probably close to 75% complete. We're going through the city review process right now. In a, the fastest timeline on the construction of this project, I imagine, would be early May. This is kind of a unique bidding season as a lot of contractors have work. So, I would imagine sometime this summer is pretty realistic. So, hopefully, you know, late spring, early summer construction. There are a number of lots that are already platted, kind of close to the Merle Hibs Boulevard, that we're just going to do some minor grading on. And then, those will hopefully become live as part of kind of the first phase, so home builders can move in and construct units. And then, we'll kind of use that material to shape the rest of the site and finish the lots that we intend to plat. As far as the triangle parcel goes, that's kind of northeast-ish on this drawing. We're proposing two duplex units in hopes to reduce the amount of driveways along Sixth Street. So, that little triangle piece that's covered up by a little bit of text is just one shared drive, similar to kind of what's across the street, but it would be for two duplex units of product type similar to what's south of Merle Hibs Boulevard. And there was a question about open space. We did deliberate that option quite a bit in the preliminary stages of design, but ultimately elected to get rid of it because the open space would lay on ground that would be pretty steep, 10%, 15% slope. Ultimately, wouldn't be that good for a public park. So, we just made deep lots, assuming that will, you know, still provide a nice amount of green space, though it's somebody's backyard. There was a question about covenants. We haven't dialed those in quite yet, Meredith, but what we're proposing is very similar to what's in the area. I think the, I think we were using maybe Glenwood Park First Edition. I couldn't find it in my emails during this conversation, so my apologies, but it will be a very similar product type to what's in the area. We're going to reduce the amount of square foot, the square footage requirement, just slightly, maybe 200 square feet or so, down to a product size, close to a minimum of like 1,300 square feet, which is a common product size today. That house would probably price, if it has a three-car garage on a lot this size and has 1,300 square feet, that's going to be close to $300,000, I would imagine, as a minimum. Our minimum lot size in the area is 70 feet, and that is the, shown kind of on the skinny lots just north of Merle Hibs Boulevard, across from the duplex units to the south. And everything going up Noelway Drive is going to be wider to give home builders some extra space to help transition that grade. I think that is kind of a brief summary and hopefully answers the questions presented tonight. But if anyone has any other questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Okay. I see somebody approaching the mic, but let me see if anybody else on the phone wanted to speak. Okay, come on up.
Oh, I just have a quick question, sir. The triangle-shaped lot you were talking about.
I'm sorry, I don't recognize your voice, ma'am.
I'm sorry, what?
I don't recognize your voice.
Karen Berger again.
Oh, Karen, okay, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Karen Berger again, I'm sorry. Yes, 812 West Merle Hibs Boulevard. Yes, where is the triangle-shaped lot you were referring to? I'm looking at the map, but I'm not sure which one it is.
It is, it is on Sixth Street.
Yes, it is just south of the church.
Oh, okay. I have to go up a little bit further. Okay, all right, I see it. Okay, all right, I see. Okay, that's where the cottage homes will be, I think?
It'll be, it'll be two units, two duplex units, so four residences in total, but two duplex units is what we're currently proposing. A cottage-style unit, we couldn't just fit. That was the original intention. We couldn't fit those units since the parcel shape is so kind of unique. And at one point in time, we tried to do some single-family, but those didn't fit well on that shape either. And in hopes to minimize the amount of drives on that corridor that's traveled a little bit more than the other residential streets west of there, we figured this was the best product.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Karen. Sure.
Jack Harkness, 915 West Merle Hibs Boulevard, which coincidentally is the same address as the Village Cooperative of Marshalltown. We're a community of 50 owners, 75 people living under one roof. And the project that we're discussing right now is borders our property, the entire east side of our property and a part of the north of it. We've been following this plan for several months. And with me tonight is Terry McCrory, who's president of our board of directors. And we are here to lend our support to the preliminary plat that you're going to be considering next. So, we just want to make that clear. We still have some questions that I'm sure are going to be answered over the next few months. But in all in all, this looks like a win-win for the Village Cooperative. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Thanks for your many years of service on planning and zoning years ago, too. And some of us are old enough to remember when the Village Co-op was going to go in and what happened at planning and zoning and at the city council at that time with all sorts of fear raised, which is typical in things like this. And what a wonderful development that's turned out to be, and look at what it spawned. And I shouldn't be talking so much editorially like this. Sorry about that. Mr. Eaton, I had seen you... Nope. Okay. Anyone else on the telephone like to speak? Well, let's have a vote.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Very good. That carried. Thank you. Let's go on to the next resolution. When ready, read that.
Resolution approving preliminary plat for the Glenwood Park Seventh Edition.
Resolution approving preliminary plat for the Glenwood Park Seventh Edition.
Entertain a motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
Ms. Isom, thank you.
Second.
Mr. Gaudi, discussion.
Michelle Sponheimer, Housing Community Development Director, again. So, this is the same area we were just discussing. This is the preliminary plat. So, this is the official part of the subdivision process. The last portion we're looking at really had to do with the zoning classification. This is actually related to the plating of property and creating of lots and that process that's required. So, the preliminary plat, as you can tell now, we're not looking at that larger-scale, big picture of the area. We're focused more on the actual parcels in question or property in question, which is being platted and created. So, it gives us a more fine-line detail on the, the parcels that we're getting in the street layout and things of that nature. So, I, I don't know that I have a whole lot to add to this, other than this is just, kind of, a part of that process. We have initiated the review, or completed the review through the county review process as well, as part of that, and staff have looked at this. We often see between preliminaries and finals, we may have some adjustments that, once those streets actually get put in and aligned, where measurements end up and those kind of things. But for the most part, this gives you a really good idea of where we expect things to develop on a preliminary, so that they can get started on those infrastructure improvements.
Thanks, Michelle. Questions or comments by the council?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I'm assuming that the entire staff's on board with all this, but Justin Nichol's been awful quiet back there, our public works director. Okay, I just see a thumbs up, okay. Just want to make sure we didn't drop the ball on anybody.
No, we do, we do recu, as part of our development process, just in general, for, for information, we do include various city departments, utilities, as part of that review process, as well, as I said, the county has a review process that includes a number of folks as well. And so, any development like this, we've been having conversations for many months over this development to get it to this point, and so we all feel very confident, I think.
I just wanted to give Justin a little mic time, if he wanted some mic time tonight, so.
He wants to go home, too.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
You bet.
He was wrong.
Let's, unless, yeah, let's open the mics. Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. You might just want to look at these properties right up here really closely, because if we go back to, oh, I can't get back there. Can you go back to the other map? Okay. Can you, can you do that for me? Right here, see this little property right here is all, kind of, messed up, broken up, not sellable, kind of, might turn into a big problem for the city. I don't see the hand. Oh, I got to scroll. Okay. Right there, see that? Thank you.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Thank you. Let's go another eight seconds.
This is Trent Smith, again, McClure Engineering, and I can comment on that particular lot. It is a little bit deceiving, since we have these super-deep lots. I think some of these lots, you know, are, they're several hundred feet deep, that, that specific lot that was circled, it looks extremely short, that faces JB Swing, but in reality, it is about 130 feet deep, which is pretty standard for a residential subdivision that is more compact, kind of, on a grid format. So, it should be sellable. You should be able to fit a very standard unit there. That's how we determined where to locate JB Swing. You are right, there is a little triangle piece that will be a little bit of a headache for the next developer, but this is a pretty standard situation and one that, that triangle piece will likely be sold to either the lots to the south or the lots to the east. And I just want to comment on one other thing, since I believe it was Jack, maybe that spoke up from the Village Cooperative. If we can go back to the preliminary plat and go to, I believe, page four, I just want to paint a picture for Jack, so he knows what's going immediately east of the Village Cooperative. So, this is the grading plan. It, kind of, shows you how the, how we're going to mold the site and mold the earthwork. With the significant terrain, as you can tell by the several lines, we're going to be channeling stormwater through two storm soils, one that, kind of, is at the rear of the lots on Nullway Drive, and one that's just east of the Village Cooperative. So, the one to the west, right by the Village Cooperative, is going to go to that flared-end section that is currently there today. So, there'll be unbuildable area, I believe it is, it's either 30 feet or 40 feet wide, immediately adjacent to the Village Cooperative property, that will just channel that stormwater to that flared-end section. So, I just wanted to paint that picture, since Jack is here tonight, and I can answer any other questions.
Thanks, Trent. That was my trial two weeks ago, jury trial over in Story County about water runoff from one area to the other. But we do trust engineers to figure these things out in advance. Let's leave the mics up another five seconds. Time to vote.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Gaudi?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Next item is, well, go ahead and read that if you would.
A public hearing followed by a resolution for the conveyance and transfer of title of parcel 8318-100-431-002 to Glenwood Marshalltown LLC.
Okay, I'll declare the public hearing is open at the time of 6:47 PM. Did the clerk receive any written comments?
I did not, Your Honor.
It is time for public comments. Open the mic for 10 seconds.
The lines are unmuted.
Time for staff review.
Yes, this is an item that we brought forward at the last meeting for discussion. There is this tiny little sliver of land in all of that PUD items in the preliminary plaque called Lot G, and this is the conveyance of this as it becomes basically part of their development. And so, what is on the agenda tonight is this public hearing and a resolution to affect that conveyance and authorize us to issue a, or to transfer the title of that parcel to Glenwood Marshalltown LLC, who is the developer of the property.
So moved, Your Honor.
I think I need to ask for, for council comments first, and if there aren't any comments, then I'll declare the public hearing open and ask for a motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Well, is, is there anybody else on the council that wants to make any comments? Not hearing or seeing any, I'll declare the public hearing is closed at seven, I'm sorry, at 6:48 PM, and I will entertain that same motion and second.
Second.
So moved.
Okay, we have the motion and second?
Can I, would it, what did Martin make a motion towards and what did Lottie Hoff second?
To approve the resolution.
Okay, good, okay, we're clear.
And that's correct on the second, too. Nod, so. Well, let's go ahead and call roll.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Gaudi?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you. That carried as well, and if you'd read the last of the public hearing matters?
Public hearing and resolution to declare necessity and establish an urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.4 of the Code of Iowa and approve an urban renewal plan for the Marshalltown Urban Renewal Area Number Six.
The public hearing is now open, and the time for that is 6:49 PM. Did you receive any written comments at the clerk's office?
I did not, Your Honor.
Time for public comments, 10 seconds.
The lines are, whoops, the lines are unmuted.
Time for staff review.
So, this is an item that it's actually been about 30 days since it was before you to set the public hearing, but all of this stuff is related. So, I'm going to try and bring up the, the map here, so I can show you, kind of, the larger urban renewal area. We've been talking a lot about some very specific parts, but ultimately, the urban renewal area that, that this plan governs is much larger, as I think you could see from what was being platted, that we are looking at this being an area where further development is possible. So, trying to assist in future developments by having this stuff in place is what we are attempting to do here. We've also basically taken the kitchen sink approach with this urban renewal area, which is to throw out any possible project that the city of Marshalltown could potentially take on as public infrastructure as well. It does not mean that we have committed ourselves to doing any of that, it just means that if something came along and we wanted to use tax increment financing, like we have talked about with the housing study, should there be a nonprofit partner with, that option is available. So, we actually do take this to the 12th Street, to the city limits, and then to the area along 8th Street, and then the lots along 6th Street as well. And so, what would be the next step here, which is not on your agenda tonight, and I'll be requesting a special meeting this week, if possible, for this and a few other items that have popped up here in the last day, would be setting a public hearing on a development agreement with Glenwood Marshalltown LLC for that first phase. So, once it's in the urban renewal area, that's where we can set up, set up the public hearing, and so that's one of the steps that needs to sequentially happen here in order to make, make that development actually happen that you have approved moving forward with tonight.
Thank you. Now, it's time for council comments. Does anybody on the council have any comments or questions?
Your Honor, I just appreciate Ms. Kinzer's interest in always looking forward, always looking ahead, so thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Weirin. Any other council comments? Hearing and seeing none, let me declare the public hearing is now closed at 6:52 PM, and I'd entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Can I, can I clarify, it was first and who was the second? Okay.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Gaudi?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well, and before we go on to Item J ordinances, I have to say that, you know, for a city that did the two housing studies and saw a real dire need for housing, this stuff is pretty exciting, it just is. All right, on to number one of under ordinances, please.
Yes, a public hearing in Ordinance 15014, approving the rezoning of 802 East Southridge Road to R2A Low Density Residential. This is the third reading.
Okay, I'll declare the public hearing is open at 6:53 PM. Did you receive any written comments at the clerk's office?
I did not, Your Honor.
Let's open, unmute the mics for 10 seconds for public comments.
The lines are unmuted.
Michelle Sponheimer, Housing Community Development Director. We talked about this item a few times now at this point. We had a correction error in our publications, and so at our, we didn't have it on our last meeting agenda like we had initially planned. So, this is the third reading, public hearing to rezone the area shown, outlined there in blue, which is, was previously part of a planning and development. There's interest from the owner to build just a single-family home, and so we are proposing to rezone to R2A, which is what the adjacent property is currently zoned as as well. So, the R2A is a low-density residential district, and so the commission had recommended approval, and as I said, we're now at the third reading of this ordinance change, to change it to R2A.
Thanks, Michelle. Time for council comments. Are there any?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Michelle, did we do damage to the owner by our mistake? I mean, is he ready to start breaking ground?
He, from what I understand and talking with Caleb, did speak to the owner, and he was still fine with scheduling and didn't have any problems, so.
But he's planning on building this year, right?
I don't know what his schedule is for, for construction, yeah.
But everything's okay, though?
I think we're fine.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Anyone else? If not, the public hearing is now closed at 6:55 PM, and I would entertain a motion to approve that resolution, that ordinance, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Gaudi?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, that carried as well, and we're on to the discussion items. I guess I can probably read those, the first one of which, gee, it's too bad the scouts have gone, because they'll miss this one. Sanitary sewer rate study update. Justin, start us off.
Good evening, Justin Nichol, Public Works Director. For those that were here the last time we went through this, I believe it was in fall of 2015, and then in early 2016, that we got to go through the process of updating our sanitary sewer rates. Little background for this iteration, in spring of 2020, city staff selected a consultant, DA Davidson, a financial consultant partnered with HR Green, a, one of our usual suspects from an engineering standpoint, to analyze and ultimately make some recommendations on our sanitary sewer rates. On the phone tonight, we have Michael Maloney from DA Davidson. He'll be making the presentation over the phone. Michael isn't comfortable yet being in person with us, and in the packet, you have his, his slideshow. We have received a preliminary draft of the sanitary sewer rate, but pending your review of what we discussed tonight, could ultimately change some things. So, if Jessica can unmute Michael, I will turn it over to him and...
I believe he is unmuted.
Michael, can you hear us?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can.
All right, perfect, very good.
Oh, I can see you, too.
Well, thank you for that introduction. Yeah, thank you for that introduction, Justin, appreciate that, and we do have a preliminary report in summary form here for you today, and those slides were included in your packet, so feel free to follow along. I will try to reference the page numbers as we go through. So, just to add a little bit on to what Justin introduced, we are working through this as a partner with the folks at HR Green. So, there are various roles and responsibilities, and do want to start off by thanking city staff for providing the necessary information for data collection. So, there were several rounds of data collection that we requested and response items received, so want to make sure Justin, Bob, and then the extended staff that, of other departments are recognized for that. So, on Slide Two, just, kind of, talking through some of those items, we started with that data collection process, and then went through reviewing some of the existing financial and funding policies and philosophies. As Justin had noted, this is a process that the city reviews on a semi-regular basis, every five years or so. So, you're building from a good foundation, and really want to be making sure that we're staying consistent with some of those items as we look towards the future. From a revenue requirement standpoint, we really wanted to understand what dollars are needed, not today, but over the near-to-midterm future, and then looking even farther, just to make sure that things are in a sufficient place and that the system overall is financially healthy. The folks at HR Green assisted in really reviewing some of the cost-of-service elements here as it relates to your customer base and makeup. So, the two of those fold together into a long-term budgetary planning tool. That's an important item that not only drives the rate study here, but is also going to be a way to evaluate not just a base case, but alternative scenarios, as, over the next near-term period with, in between your rate study process. So, just, kind of, a high-level overview there, and then Slide Three really references, kind of, the waterfall. And while it's used for the model framework, I think it's also a good item to point out in terms of how things really flow through your system. So, your utility system has rates and charges that are driven by usage, and your system base in terms of customers and type of customers provide your revenues. As those come in the door, they're applied towards paying expenses for operating. The remaining portion then services the debt, and then falls through down to either cash balances as you build for a rainy day, or covers pay-as-you-go CIP projects that you buy. or covers pay-as-you-go CIP projects that you identified. So we've got that really built into the flow with a modeling for not only your long-term CIP needs, but also any potential borrowing that might align with that and any projected bonding. So this interplay kind of works through, but that waterfall might be a useful way to think about it. And it's further articulated in the final rate study that you will be seeing. If you go on to slide four, I think one of the unique pieces here of this process and really trying to allow for work beyond just the letters on the page. I appreciate the Boy Scouts consideration. This is not always the most exciting topic. That being said, I think there are going to be various challenges and opportunities, especially if the city continues to grow, that being able to model out those considerations as part of the model inside the rate study was a benefit that staff was seeking at the time of the proposal process. So really taking a look at making sure that there's financial sufficiency for any of the capital funding that you're looking to do in the future, what's on your CIP and what may be around the corner. I think your staff was well attuned to what those considerations are and challenged both Davidson and HR Green to consider those throughout the process. I'd be remiss if we didn't mention some of the challenges for Marshalltown, especially over the last year, COVID-19 from a global standpoint. But within the state, tornado, derecho considerations, especially locally, I think are important to think about as other impacts on your constituents beyond rates. So we're thoughtful about that. But we're also trying to make sure that there is a sustainable system for the long term as the city will continue to need to drive and provide high levels of service. So to keep that system maintained and sustained for the long term, modest adjustments are going to be necessary over the long term. I think the biggest element here to finish up slide four is really just talking about how to implement some of those capital expenditure items. The timing implementation of those really falls back into, what dollars do you have available today or in the future to address those capital needs, either as a pay-as-you-go in the moment or to borrow and leverage long-term low-interest rates for that purpose? The city's in a really good spot today, but how do we maintain that for the future as well? I think that's an important part of the process here. Shifting gears, I do want on slide five, just to, on a high level, identify some of the utility finance metrics that you may be accustomed to hearing about through the course of normal city business. But I'm going to focus on two measures of liquidity here. The first is going to be debt service coverage. This is similar to EBITDA from a commercial finance standpoint, where you've got the ability to have net revenues of your operation cover your debt payments. You don't want that to be a one-time thing. You want some cushion there, not only to be able to deal with volatility, but to also be able to take dollars through that waterfall to your bottom line to help address pay-as-you-go capital projects and reduce borrowing and make sure you've got healthy reserves for a rainy day. That lies into the short-term liquidity, and that's your cash balance. You know, we always kind of target days' cash on hand, you know, your percentage of operating expenses for the system. That's something that the city's done in a healthy manner. And whether it's a baseline target or, you know, the 90 days is a sort of an absolute minimum, we want to make sure that that's considered and that we maintain that, not just in the next budget year, but in the near-to-midterm as well. So this is really the general consideration. Slide six, then, will show just some of the places where the city's been with their sanitary sewer fund over the last five years, this historical. If you take a look at the gray shaded areas, you'll notice that those debt service coverage figures are very healthy. And we'll talk about this a little bit later. But as the city has continued strong financial performance, it has also significantly been paying off debt payments. So as that's going forward, especially as that continues over the next couple of years, it will increase capacity to address near-to-midterm larger capital needs if necessary. Gives the city a lot of flexibility, I think, is the short story there. From a cash balance standpoint, you can see those are pretty healthy dollar amounts. But I think you also need to keep in mind what's around the corner. These go through last fiscal year. We're in the fourth quarter now of this fiscal budget year. And it's important to understand that there are significant capital needs already articulated in the city's capital improvement plan. So a lot of those dollars are going to be targeted to paying for those without additional borrowing. And I think that's the math problem here, is really, how do we manage that over the near-to-midterm to keep rates as low as possible, but also continue investing in the system? I'm just going to pause there for a brief second, make sure that we're all following here. If there's any questions as we finish looking backwards and maybe look forward in the final half of this presentation.
I'll call for those questions or comments.
Okay, hearing none. Let's go to slide seven and just take a look at kind of our base case projection. So I mentioned the very strong performance on the historical debt coverage and very strong reserves. What I think is important is to take a look to the future and think about, not just addressing the current CIP, but what could pop up? What are those challenges or opportunities, either from a growth standpoint with a building community or from some of your existing larger industrial or commercial entities, perhaps needing some additional infrastructure to service their needs? So as we considered that, looking forward, I think it's very important to recognize that a couple of your debt issues that you've refinanced very favorably over the last couple of years, many of them are maturing in that fiscal '28, fiscal '29 standpoint. And while that may seem like a long ways away, that's only six or seven budget cycles out there. So there is a period where the city's debt for the sewer utility kind of really is significantly reduced. And that allows for flexibility in case something did come up or there were opportunities from a debt issuance standpoint. If something did pop up, whether it's through the state revolving fund or through the credit markets, there are opportunities to leverage those low-long rates and be able to really help make sure that your cash flow stays strong, regardless of those circumstances. So there's a good amount of flexibility that's in this base model, which means that as additional scenarios are created, as necessary, those can be addressed. So what are some of those projects? And we can take a look at slide nine, just on to the capital improvement plan. I know everyone's fresh off of the budget cycle on slide eight, sorry about that. I think one of the key items is nutrient removal. It's such a large consideration around the state. I think it's important to consider what that means. There are a number of costs associated with treating especially the strength of the wastewater coming through the city's system. So the DNR mandates certain levels of those potential items, and the rest need to be removed. So to make those happen, you know, the city's projected to have about $9 to $10 million of related improvements for those. Just for some context, the average annual CIP spend over the last five years we just took a look at, has about $2.4 million per year. So a very large potential project out there. So that's why we're making sure that we've got adequate funds and adequate cash flow to be able to address those items as they come up. We've really talked about this a little bit, but I think it's important also to just take a look graphically, and we'll shift to that here in a couple of slides. Slide nine, I think kind of the last piece of just tying this together, is that we've mentioned that interest rates are very low. The city's refinanced, that's very positive. What it also means is that if you do need to borrow, it can help reduce the potential for near-term rate adjustments because of that flexibility. And it also means that the city's really just paid down so much debt that it can be thoughtful about, hey, which larger projects do we need to borrow for? So that whole concept here is just about reducing impact on ratepayers. Graphically, you can take a look at slide 10. I think it's really helpful just to see this sometimes from a bar chart standpoint. But when I talked about debt falling offline 28 or 29, you'll notice those blue bars really declined significantly, which means there's plenty of flexibility in the mid-to-long term to address even larger capital needs as necessary. The other item I think is important is just the total amount of sewer debt that's outstanding, as shown by the gray line there. You'll notice that it's really declined over the last several years and is on a trend to continue to do so. It's actually well below some of the historical levels. So wouldn't be out of bounds if needed to address some of these items. And again, there's plenty of cash on hand currently and a good operating of the system to address a lot of these needs on a pay-as-you-go basis. Well, as we work towards wrapping this up, I think the important question of any rate study is, what do we end up having to do on rates? So let's take a look at slide 11 here briefly. One of the important things to consider on any rate process is, where do we stack up? And there's no perfect way to really analyze this. I think the important piece is to understand that all systems across the state are in different life cycles. That being said, the city of Ames does a really nice job each year of consolidating a report with ranking on water and sewer of communities serving over 10,000 a population. So on that list, Marshalltown's average sewer bill for the residential folks is 19th on that list out of 42, so solidly in the middle there. We talked about where that rate, you know, is built. And they quantify that on, you know, no usage, kind of average customer usage, and commercial usage. We're really looking at that kind of typical residential bill. And on that case, one of the other very good things that Marshalltown does is make sure that their fixed charges are a strong percentage of that bill. Really reduces flexibility at any times of potential volatility. The other nice thing, the city's average use is actually slightly below what that kind of standard usage for residential is statewide. And that's based off an affordability report. So everything's kind of sourced back up, either through the city of Ames or other third parties that have put this together. While there's nothing dramatic here in terms of some of the rate adjustments we're talking about, I think it's important to take away from the day, staying the course on the good fiscal management of the system and considering implementing those modest, regular adjustments, keeping pace. We're going to suggest here as part of our report and really recommend kind of annual cost-of-living type adjustments of about 1% per year. You know, that doesn't mean that it's going to work forever, but I think in the scope of what we're looking at here in terms of that near-to-midterm, it's going to help keep pace with inflation, help make sure you can keep up with capital projects, and put you in a good shape where you're not scrambling, hopefully, you know, four or five years from now on the next go-around on a more detailed rate study. So what does 1% mean? Let's take a look at slide 12, just a little bit of a table there from a monthly standpoint. And I'm aware that for the vast majority of your residential customers, you know, bill on an every-other-month basis. So this is monthly, though their bills might reflect that bimonthly billing cycle. So what does 1% mean? You know, we took that base charge from $23.75, talking about a quarter, to bring that to an even $24 at some point in the next year, if this is something you follow through on. And still being just shy of $25, basically a doll, a buck, over five years. Just about the same there on the flow charges, those kind of modest adjustments, $308 to $311 to $322. And that average monthly bill, and this is tied back to the third party that suggested your average usage for residential, about $474, that should be cubic feet. What's going on there is $38.35 per month to just an even $40 in five years. So again, that's a really modest dollar amount overall, but it's important to kind of stay the course and enjoy that value of compounding over time with those rates. Slide 13 is just a brief summary of what that looks like in terms of the report, kind of showing that high and median from those peers on the Ames study. And again, depending on their life cycle, their capital needs, where they are in nutrient removal or maybe a new plant project, that can be a little bit of a lagging indicator. Often, other folks are on the precipice of adjusting their rates as well. So with just some modest increases, even on the projected, city's strongly in the middle of the pack there in terms of affordability. And I think that's important to point out. I'm going to wrap up on slide 14, but not necessarily regurgitate everything on the page. You know, I think it's important to consider something that we've seen as infrastructure costs have continued to increase around the state, primarily due to capital needs of aging infrastructure. You know, we're talking about these smaller cost-of-living type adjustments, but would suggest the potential to make these automatic adjusters each year. A lot of folks have started taking action to do that after maybe a larger increase that's tied to a sizable capital project. And I think it's a good practice to get into, just to make sure that that's in place each budget cycle, each fiscal year, however you feel appropriate from a timing standpoint. The other item that I'd be remiss to point out that we did not hit today was in regards to some of Agent Art Green's feedback in terms of continuing to monitor and review some, you know, there's different treatment that the city either does or may have to do that costs money, whether it's operating or capital-wise. And by continuing monitoring and review, there may be potential places to augment the rate ordinance to find other surcharges. And we're not talking about trying to really recreate the wheel, but just if there's additional treatment costs on the city, can you align to make sure there are revenues to come in to offset those needs? So, you know, it's nothing on the near term, but I think as we see things evolve from a DNR standpoint, being sure that the city stays nimble with their rate structure to address those needs in a changing world. So I know that was a lot. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. You obviously see more of the report from us. But I think that's as short a summary as we can have on what's an important, if not necessarily the most fun topic for you folks today. So I'll pause there. Justin, not sure if there's anything I missed, or turn it over to council.
No, I think that was pretty comprehensive, Michael. I guess I would offer, Michael can answer any questions about the process or the dynamics of the numbers of how we got here. I can certainly answer any questions on the history of where we've been. I know Bob Ranson was on the line, whether he's still on or not, I'm not sure. But we certainly can answer any questions, or if you need some time to work through this. I guess our recommendation is a modest 1% increase for three years is how we implemented last time. I think it went into effect '16 and '17, January 1 of '16, '17, and '18. You certainly can set the timeframe. You know, I might suggest January 1 of '22, '23, and '24 for these 1% rate increases. Or certainly would entertain any conversation on any different thoughts. Questions we can answer.
Yeah, time for questions or comments.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I hate to bring this up, but looking down the road at the total CIP for the city in all departments, I think our residents pay a fair amount, a lower amount than other cities. And to keep future projects out of the CIP with the sewer rates, I guess I'd like to see a 2% increase the first year and then 1% after that. I think we should... I mean, we're talking about going from $23.75 to $24.25 the first year. Just not, you know, we have aging infrastructure. We're going to be adding flow. And just knowing what the CIP is in other areas, if we have a way here to keep money out of the CIP, the total picture, I think this is fair to pass it on to all the residents since I think we offer some good water and good sewer rates for our citizens. I guess I'd like to hear what other people have to say about that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Anyone either wish to respond or make other comments or questions?
I think I'd like to follow the recommendation of the people that we hired. I think that they've got a better handle on what exactly we need going forward. I would be okay with 1% per year.
I see one head shaking yes to that. Any other comments or questions? Let's unmute the mics for 10.
The lines are unmuted.
10 seconds is up. Does staff need a recommendation, direction, motion?
So this has to be set by ordinance. And I think what we would want to know is, would you like an ordinance to come next meeting for a first reading with the recommendation from the consultant? Or would you like to come with a draft of an ordinance that's for discussion?
The floor is open to make a motion one direction or the other.
Your Honor?
Ms. Martin?
I think we need to move forward in a timely way and do a three-year plan, so on. Nobody likes to increase rates, but there are reasons to do so. And one of them, unknown to some of us, is the nutrient reduction standards that are coming about and are here now, for that matter. Is that correct, Justin? Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Martin. Sure.
Is that a motion?
Good question.
Yes, it is.
Okay, second.
Very good. Moved and seconded to go forward with that three-year plan as proposed. Anybody need any clarification before we call for a vote? anybody need any clarification before we call for vote? Well, let's go ahead and vote then.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yeah.
Isom?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Okay. We have staff direction, and the next discussion item is about the Sixth Street Parking Lot Completion Change Order Number Two.
Jeff Hubbard, Parks and Rec Director. Um, so as you saw, you just approved, um, an extra $75,000 to get basically two-thirds of the parking lot done. Um, we asked Construct, you know, if they would honor this pricing, if they could do the whole thing, what would it be? Um, it'd be an extra $192,000. Um, we had originally planned on bringing this up into two phases. Um, I think if we do do that, it's gonna obviously cost a little bit more. If we could get this all done by June 30th and spend an extra $176,000, uh, we could get the whole parking lot done and be done. Um, so I guess we're kind of looking for some direction if you guys would like to, um, bond. Uh, Diana found, um, an extra $26,000, um, from some bond issuance, some allocations, premiums. Um, so we, we could use that towards it if we don't have any other extra change orders, and just bond the remaining $150,000, or we could do the full $176,101, um, and get this project done this year.
Counsel reactions?
My, uh, my first comment would be saving $200,000 on a budget of what was originally gonna be split in two phases, and the fact that that has been long overdue. I'm in support with proceeding to, to get it done in one fell swoop, especially when we got a big state tournament coming up. Image of the, uh, community, um, saving some long money, long-term, from, uh, some projects that, uh, are, are in the funnel already. I, I'm ready to hit the go button.
Anyone else? I saw some heads nodding yes.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I think, I, everybody knows how I feel about this. I wanted the whole thing done in the first place, so yes, let's get it done in one, one fell swoop. But I was told then that we had to put this out for bid again.
Uh, no, we, we don't have to, as long as Construct is willing to honor the price that they submitted on phase number one, and are willing to accept a change order in for it.
I'm okay with that, then. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. If any other counselor is not, uh, gonna have any questions or comments, I can open an unmute to mics, I guess. Let's, uh, go ahead and do that.
The lines are unmuted.
Okay. Let's go ahead and mute them again. Uh, Mr. Isom, is that a motion?
So, moved, Your Honor.
Mr. Thompson, is that a second?
Uh, the motion is to use future bond issuance for the balance then? Just what's presented in the memo?
Can, can Diana clarify some things here first for you on that?
Okay.
Diana Snyder, Finance Director. So, yes, um, you would need, I would come back at the next meeting, and it, you would have a reimbursement resolution, which means anything that you borrow in the future, we can go back and, and reimburse ourselves for this cost. So, yes, if, if you'd like me to do that, that would be fine, and we just need to know whether you want the $176,000, or if you want me to use the premium and then go down to $150. So, we need to know the amount.
What do you recommend?
Well, you don't have to, I mean, even the reimbursement resolution, you don't have to use it if, you know, if the other projects come in less, and we don't need it, we won't, we won't transfer it, so, or won't reimburse ourselves. So, um, in my mind, it's better to have the higher dollar amount in your pocket in case you do need it. So, I would recommend the 176.
Okay. With that clarification, should we ask for a motion to approve it with $176,000?
So, moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Very good. I forgot whether we were unmuted on this one or not.
We did, Your Honor.
Okay, let's, let's call for a vote then.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Okay, carried as well. Staff has its direction, and the third item to discuss tonight is the county held tax certificate, uh, 503 Woodbury Street. Start us off on that one.
Um, yes, I, this one is one that I'll, I'll bring forward here. Um, so, 503 Woodbury is a vacant lot that the city has been maintaining for, for years. Um, every time we maintain this lot, we, uh, the bills do not get paid, so we specially assess those, uh, to the property through the, through the county, and we are over, I think, $7,500 worth of assessments and mowing, um, and snow shoveling on this property. And so, uh, there is some interest in, um, I should say, it's a county-held tax certificate, because no one then is purchasing the tax certificates as they go, as the taxes go unpaid each year. And we have done this in the past a few times where we've had some, uh, county-held tax certificates, where we've had someone say, "I'm interested in this. Will you actually request it from the county, city, and ask them to abate all liens or all taxes on it, um, current and past due, as well as any special assessments you might have?" And that's really what's being requested here, is that we would bring forward a resolution on the next council meeting to request, um, that the county, uh, give us this tax certificate. Then, um, if, if that is a yes, and we do that, and the county, or the county does a resolution and abates everything, we get, uh, the tax certificate, and then, uh, Roger undertakes the process to notify all lien holders. Um, I should say that we have not run a lien report on this property to see if there are any other liens, um, besides those of property taxes and special assessments. And so, um, that would just basically mean that, uh, we would not probably financially, uh, take on anything to remove those lien holders, um, and there would need to be a, a process there. So, um, if that's something that you want to, uh, clear up in the, in the meantime, we can certainly do that, but otherwise, if this would be something you'd want to request, and then ultimately, we would put it out for, um, sale, uh, we would, uh, we would start with requesting the tax certificate from the county. So, that's kind of the process. Um, it does take a little bit of time, just because of all the steps involved, especially with, uh, trying to get a tax deed. Uh, if you can't find your lien holders, that's not, it doesn't become the quickest, easiest process. Um, but as I said, we don't know who lien holders would be on this property.
So, if we vote and give you approval to proceed, uh, that only gets us to the first step, and that's to get the county to see if they will release the liens or not?
Yes, and, and I will say that the county has been willing to work with us on these properties as well. Um, and so, I, I, in conversations I've had, it seems like it would be that this request would be treated the same way as our past requests. Um, so, the, the only thing would be that we just don't have a, a lien report showing if there's anything else besides property taxes due.
Okay. Comments or questions by the counsel?
I think this is a good project. Um, it's gonna help clear up a little, uh, some award won, a little bit, get the property back on the tax roll, so I'm all in favor.
Anybody disagree with that?
I just have a question, Your Honor.
You bet.
So, Jessica, on these, this, this is considered like those 657As, right? I mean, similar?
No. Uh, so, 657A can only be used for an abandoned building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we get into this, and the lien report comes back where there's just a laundry list, do we back out of it then?
I would-
Do we have, are we, once we've asked the county, do we have to pursue it then?
I would say that we could probably, uh, I'll, I'll let Roger answer that one, actually.
Well, I think it would be, no matter what the liens are, the, the only problem would be serving them. Uh, I don't think lien holders are gonna come in and, uh, try to contest
Okay.
to take the property back.
Okay. Then, yes, I agree that, I didn't mean to cut you off, Roger, I mean.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Um, I agree that, yeah, anything we can do to flip vacant lots, dilapidated buildings, anything is, is good for the taxpayers of Marshalltown, so. Thank you, Roger. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Thank you for the clarification. Anyone else? Again, I kind of doubt this is controversial, or there'd be a lot of public comment, but let's open the mics for 10 seconds.
The lines are unmuted.
I think the staff has a direction on this one, but if you'd like it, uh, motion second, then vote, we could do that?
I'm, I'm fine with just, uh, planning to bring forward a resolution on the 26th.
Yep, I think you got your consensus. Let's go on to the next one, that's the first quarter strategic plan update.
Yes, um, so, uh, admittedly, the first quarter, I always schedule to be fairly light, um, when it comes to our strategic plan, just because the, but the budget process is pretty much the whole first quarter. So, staff is, uh, staff and counsel are pretty well occupied with the, uh, with the budget process as part of that first quarter. Um, however, uh, we do have an action plan, um, that has a number of action items, and, uh, we have things that are moving forward, and we do have some things that we have completed as well, or have been successful in achieving here in the first quarter. So, I'm just gonna do kind of very brief, uh, overview. Um, our first goal is about development, and we talk about that being in multiple facets, and I'm, uh, happy to share that we did meet our goal of getting, um, some additional land into the urban revitalization area number two, uh, that that ordinance reading did happen before March 31st, and, uh, that, uh, we are participating in the founding of the Marshalltown Community Development Corporation. Uh, Michelle is on the board of that organization, and there will definitely be more to come, uh, with that here in the future. Uh, we are also working with the Chamber on their industrial barriers, and then, uh, as we talk about considering other infrastructure for development projects, um, the development agreement with Prime Development for Creekside Estates and the Street is one, one thing that was done in the, the first quarter. As we get to goal number two, this is about enhancing our image through, um, how we communicate, as well as our appearance in the community as well, and the things that we can, uh, try and control. There really was not, um, anything that happened here, uh, in, in the, uh, first quarter. Um, a lot of actions, but not really completing anything. Um, so, more to definitely come on this one here as we move into the second and third quarters of the year. Uh, goal number three is, uh, what I like to say, it's our look internally at what are we doing, and, uh, um, where do we need to review and improve? Uh, we do have some red ones on this. Um, uh, the sanitary sewer rate study was one that kept getting kind of pushed back a little bit further. We'd hoped to have it by March 31st, but we, we did, uh, um, get that done here tonight in front of you. Um, we also had a few things about, um, getting a street improvement plan in front of you. Ultimately, with the discussion about delaying, um, our discussion on bonding, that kind of delayed that discussion as well, so that we'll be getting that in front of you, uh, when we're talking about some other projects and, and putting together kind of that in a holistic picture for, uh, borrowing as well. Uh, we also wanted to get in front of you a few other things related to just kind of giving you an update on what we have done, what projects the city has done in the last year that contribute towards our ADA, um, compliance, and, uh, that will be coming forward soon. And then, um, I can't read that bottom one. Uh, my eyes are not that good right now. So, but there was another one that we missed. But I do want to highlight that we do have some green on this one as well, uh, which was, um, our, our safety meetings are ongoing. We were able to use Presidents' Day as our training day, as we had hoped to, and that you did have, um, some long-term projections for the general fund to help guide your thinking, um, as, as we, uh, went through the budget process. Our fourth goal is really trying to identify, um, specific partnerships that we have formed through various agreements, as well as other things that are just kind of generally happening in the community, uh, to, to really, um, identify how we work as a, a, a team to improve quality of life. There aren't too many updates here. Uh, we really haven't had anything with the Arts and Culture Alliance and Impact yet. Amber did do an update, but we don't have anything specific, uh, quite yet to, um, to bring forward. Uh, and then with Trails Inc., as I mentioned, you know, we do have, that we will promote the funding efforts of Trails Inc. as an ongoing thing. So, you took an action towards that tonight, which will show up in the next quarter's report, but there isn't, uh, anything specific there. And then on, uh, a number of other partnerships, the one thing that is completed and done, uh, was looking at the land exchange, uh, with the Marshalltown Community School District. We are not pursuing that, so that one is marked as complete. Um, again, this one is one where I feel like things change kind of as we go throughout the year. Um, we, we start this process in November, and this was approved in January, uh, but you never know what partnerships might be needed as we move forward. I am happy to answer any questions you might have, um, but, uh, I feel like everything that's kind of in the pack, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Any questions or comments?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Question for Jessica, please. Jessica, back to goal one, um, administer, under objective one, administer the shared wall grant program. Did, remind us, did we save money for the wall up on, uh, Main Street there next to Center? Did we set aside some for that, once we get, you know, uh, Joanne Strubing's building, uh, uh, Tim Hoffman's building, then now the Poe House is, Wendy's building is now, did we save something for that?
Yes. Um, we do have, I, I'm gonna just say roughly, I think, $300,000. Um, there's, uh, probably going to be some requests to finish off the two walls that are across the street here on Center Street. Um, the original agreement that we had approved with, um, those owners was to do EPIS at where a building line was to end, and so there was not a bottom portion that was planned. Um, but, uh, um, uh, in a kind of lucky turn, uh, they would like to go with, um, finishing stucco, which is a cheaper product than EPIS, and it's also historically accurate. And so, uh, we, we've got some estimates for some additional scope for, uh, a finishing stucco to be applied to those walls, um, versus kind of the rough stucco that you see right now.
Okay, and then getting back to Main Street, do we know when that, that work's gonna be completed up there?
Um, we have filed a 657A case on 10 West Main Street, so I would say that we will be subject to, um, notification, notification of lien holders, and then if anybody can contest that case, then, uh, we will, um, we will have a timeline that will be subject to the courts.
So, we're at the mercy of the courts again?
It was, if somebody contests it, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. The good news is the courts are back in business, and they're actually cleaning up the backlog pretty fast. But it always, as Roger will attest, it always takes a lo- longer than you think it should. Other comments or questions? Thanks for that report. Thanks for having us for us, too, starting years ago. I think it's good to keep on, keep on track and know where we're going, and know where we've been, and where we hope to go next. Let's go on to the, uh, last item, and that's the discussion of the disaster exception for open burning. Who'd like to start us off?
Gabe Kahn. So, um, I, I requested this to be added to the agenda, had some conversations, at least to bring before counsel, um, whether we do or don't do something, and doesn't matter to me, but I wanted to at least bring to attention with regards to some of the, um, called disallowance from FEMA to do anything from a removal of debris, and a position that puts that, some of the commercial properties in from a, an ability to remediate some of the debris from the dray show, specifically Elmwood. Uh, Gary, I think you were tied into possibly a conversation as well. Um, to what we do or otherwise, I'm not quite sure. I know Chief Harrison's been involved in a conversation or two, um, and they're looking for some assistance in whether there's other commercial properties or not that are involved and have, are in the same situation. I guess I don't know. Uh, but with, uh, the size of the debris, the amount of piles and otherwise, and, um, no assistance from the city, FEMA or otherwise, is what we do, if we do anything to allow from, um, some burning of that debris outside of what the current ordinance is written. And that would be at least what I, in my mind, if we were to proceed with something, a temporary ordinance change for a specific timeline to allow for that. I guess I'll open any other questions, and I believe, uh, at least Cory is on the phone from Elmwood, is allowed to possibly answer any questions or provide any insight from where they're currently at.
Counsel, comments or questions?
Uh, just, just one comment I'd like to make. If, if there is to be a change in the ordinance, it would have to come by way of amendment of the current ordinance, and, and could not be the result of a council resolution. Okay.
Understood.
Uh, Your Honor, can I get some background on this? Uh, Justin, um, when? You're younger, your memory's better than mine. When we opened up the compost facility to everybody for free, did we exclude commercial properties, or, and that was open for everybody, right?
Yes, the, the, uh, dumping of your vegetative debris at the compost facility did, excluded no one.
That's after, I mean, I'm talking about after the dray show.
Correct.
Okay, and then, I know you did pickups, your, your department, your staff, you know, we, you, you know, you were very gracious, and we kinda-
I should clarify, we didn't do pickup for commercial.
That's why I wanted, that's always my-
It allowed them to dump. It allowed them to dump.
That was my question. Did we do?
We did not do.
The pickup was residential only, but the compost facility was free for anybody, and we didn't even monitor if they were inside the city limits, did we?
No, we did not.
All right. That was my question for you. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Other questions or comments about it? Should we invite the public?
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you.
I'm Corey Straight, 1734 Country Club Lane. I'm the general manager at Elmwood, and it's been quite the year, if you will. I came a year ago, and I came in, I believe it was March 3rd, and I think the COVID hit about March 9th, and then of course the Dratch Show, so we've all had quite a year. Not to lean on that. However, when the Dratch Show hit, it was quite the tragedy. We can all understand that. And so I had multiple calls from multiple members, multiple community members, multiple even city members and officials, and we were all trying to work together. And we certainly didn't want to do anything that would hinder anyone else. And in working together, my biggest goal was to just be able to figure out how can we save the course and best get rid of the debris. You know, I'm looking right at about 350 trees, and it wasn't just 350 trees. Some of those trees were 200 and 250 years old, very large trees, which you've all seen, and that's a tragedy in itself. So in the process, Chief Ryerson and Josh have been absolutely wonderful to work with, and we've all been trying to work together, but I'm just looking for some form of working together again, if you will, or help. Working with Chief Ryerson and some volunteer fire departments, the Melbourne Fire Department and the Rhodes Fire Department are prepared to help us, and Chief Ryerson has been good to accommodate us with that under the current restrictions. And so they were lined up to come up yesterday, and with three trucks to be on property and help us burn, of course, the winds got high, and that's our luck. So we chose not to do that, of course, because of the restrictions. So we're on target, hopefully, to bring them in again next Sunday, depending on the wind and the weather conditions. However, if some kind of leeway could be given to bring in even, say, four or five trucks, they're willing to do it. And what I mean by that is to say, okay, if we were to bring in four or five trucks, and we could have one truck on each pile, and we could burn, knowing it's manned, and we can use our forced wind, et cetera, to get rid of the smoke, to burn it hotter, to alleviate the smoke, because we have blowers and all those things, if we could do that, and have maybe like an open, maybe overnight even, for a weekend or two, I really think we could just get it done and benefit everyone.
Thanks for that input. Any questions or comments for him?
So, Mr. Straight, are you saying that it would be manned, like, the whole time? Because that's my concern, is that it's supervised.
Yes, what I'm saying is whatever restrictions would be put on, or, yes, that it would be manned the entire time. I can guarantee you that. So if the fire had to be out at 7:00 PM like currently, or if the fire had to be manned through an overnight, I can guarantee it would be manned, because through the volunteer fire departments, plus the fact that we have water all over the course, we have all that access to be able to man that. Now, one of the other things that is a concern is some of the size of the wood that is in the piles. So last fall, we got a few, a couple, well, a few of the piles burnt, and what we did was we got them put out. And so what my goal would be, would be to burn everything around it, and then at any point that you folks said it had to be fully extinguished, we would fully extinguish. But when all of the small to mid-sized stuff was burned, then anything that was charred, if you will, that was large, then it's a lot easier for me to pull that out and dispose of it.
Mr. Straight, this is Gary Thompson. You say you burnt some last year?
We did burn some, with a permit and abiding to the restrictions and conditions, yes.
Okay, and you had permits in place this year to burn?
So I have a current permit to burn, and it was, like I said, we were gonna burn yesterday, and the wind was too high. When the wind exceeds 15 miles an hour, we're unable to burn, and it was right on that line, and we don't want to walk a line. We just want to work together and get it done.
I appreciate that. I mean, I think it sounds responsible, like it's being handled responsibly when it is, when they are able to burn, so.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Anything else to say about it?
Couple things of concern. One, certainly the size of the lumber, I mean, 100, 200-year-old trees, and those trees, if left to burn, will burn for days, weeks, maybe months, with no respite, and if it's to be monitored 24/7, so on, that's quite a chore. I've got a simple solution for this whole thing. That is for Elmwood and any other commercial entity to remove the large trees, remove, and burn the brush as per city code. Simple as that. Sorry, I commiserate with the loss of trees, the expense. Two-thirds of the Marshalltown population, I've been told, suffered damage. The city lost 1,600 trees on city property. We have stump removal. We are fortunate in that we'll get all but, I think, 15% of our removal costs covered by FEMA. Unfortunately, FEMA disregarded and ignored and declined to fund private commercial property. So to me, it's simple, but it's a tough, tough role for all of us. I've heard one plea for a bond issue, which to me is out of sorts for the city to pay for removal and so on of private property. That's a non-starter. So that's where I'm coming from right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I fully understand. I fully understand everything you're saying, and I don't think everyone quite understands the impact, though. It's, we're not a normal, if you will, business. I can't just go in and grab the largest amount of debris and pull it out without tearing up all of the turf. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. So that's why I reached out to Chief Ryerson and then to these small-town volunteers. And so I do understand when a very large piece of debris is burning, it could take days, or weeks, or months to put out. However, the volunteer fire department said they would be more than happy to ensure the fact it was put out through foam. So if I can burn all the debris around it with whatever restrictions that this city council would put on me, whether that be 7:00 PM, 8:00 PM, 9:00 PM, whatever it is, then they've assured me they can foam those pieces and put them right out, and then I could haul them away.
Your Honor?
Mr. Thompson?
May I ask a question of Chief Ryerson?
You may.
Chief, the two other entities in town that would have had similar damage, as far as golf courses, would have been Wandering Creek and the Legion. The other entities would have been us with Riverview Park, and then Riverside Cemetery. Have, how did they dispose of all their trees? I know how Riverview Park did, obviously, but how did Riverside and the Legion and Wandering Creek, did they ask for fire permits?
I got no requests for a burn permit from Wandering Creek. I did get a request for burn permit from the Legion, which they did, but as far as the rest of the debris, I don't know how they got rid of everything, but they did request a burn permit and received one.
And when was that, Chief? Was that this year or last year?
No, that was last, that was last fall.
So right now, the only big burn would be, that's current right now, is Elmwood's, what Mr. Straight said, he has a permit right now?
He has a permit to burn, following the guidelines that we set forth in, not only in the ordinance, but the specific requirements I asked for him to follow, due to the number of piles and the amount of debris that he has out there.
And it's my understanding that the Legion has more burn piles to go. I haven't been out there myself, but I've heard they still have piles that they want to burn.
And that could be true. They have not contacted me for a burn permit, so.
Yeah, and I can speak to that, because I'm out there every day, and they're probably as much, if not more, than the country club has. Last year, they adhered to the burn restrictions, but they're gonna be in the same position. I think my only question is if we do an amendment, I think that covers overall, the whole, our whole area. So not only are you gonna have probably some other commercial entities gonna do this, and so if the American Legion follows suit, you're gonna have them also reaching out to do this, because they don't have resources to get rid of the large trees, which I'm assuming if you got them started, they're gonna burn forever. I mean, it's not a, it's not a campfire thing in your backyard where at 7:00 o'clock at night, you throw some water on it and it goes out. I mean, this is, I guess for no better analogy, it's a dilemma of nobody's choosing. It just happened. And unfortunately, there's not insurance. So what we decide is either gonna help them, or say, well, is it a city problem? I hate to put it that bluntly, but...
I guess, Your Honor, I guess the only, the only compromise that I'm willing to make is we give them a free pass at the compost facility and let them haul their stuff down there, you know? And if we do that, we need to open up the compost facility for free for everybody again, for a time period. I just, I'm just against commercial properties, burning that amount of wood. I just, I'm just not happy with it. And I understand their situation. It is a golf course. It is a park. I get that. I don't know the alternative, if it's burying their debris, or contacting a company that would want the big lumber to come in and get it, and again, it's gonna tear up their park setting. I just can't vote to let them, to allow them to burn it outside of what's already in practice. And I have to be honest, I'm not happy that they were even given a permit, but that's not my say, but I'm just speaking as a resident there, so. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Other counsel comments or questions of the chief, or anyone else? I guess, Chief, as long as you're up there, I'm curious about what input you have, or would recommend.
Well, I think you all know that I'm not a huge fan of open burning, and have suggested in the past that we do away with it, but what we have now is kind of a compromise, that we're not having 12 months, a year of open burning. We have times that we can do it. If you haven't been out there and looked at it, it is, you know, it's, if you saw Riverside Cemetery in the park, Riverside Park, you'll know that's about the extent of it out there. And I acknowledge the fact that they have some very, very large tree debris that needs to be getting rid of, gotten rid of, and I am not a fan of allowing that burning to occur, just for the fact that it's gonna take days or weeks for that stuff to burn up. Now, some of the smaller debris, if it's done correctly, should be able to be burned up, and hopefully not a lot of inconvenience to the neighborhood surrounding it. And I mean, I do acknowledge the fact that it's not of their doing. You know, everybody's been put in that position, so.
I guess the only reason I brought it up is what I would call an imposed bias by FEMA for the commercial properties. The financial impact to a business in town, I mean, we know what the dollar number is for Riverside, and it's not a small dollar number by any means, so the implications it has for a local business, I just, I wanted to bring it up for discussion. I don't know that there's a right answer one way or the other, but I thought it was a worthwhile discussion, being that it's not the typical situation that, based off of some natural disasters we've experienced, so.
Yeah.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
So, if I may, are you, Mr. Ryson, are you suggesting that an alternative other than burning would be that we haul the debris out?
I would be more in favor of burning than expenditure of financial means from a city perspective of hauling away of debris.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. I knew where you were on that. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, if we can keep partnering with them, and you're happy, they're happy, you know, it's not the ideal situation for anybody, but if it's working as it is, where they get a permit, they're burning responsibly, I don't see why, and they're getting volunteer firefighter help, too.
So I, so when I went back out to look at the course, I asked for them to do some additional things to make sure that we'd got the burning done at, you know, at 7:00 at night, and it was out, and that it is supervised. Part of the problem we ran into last fall was trying to burn too much too soon, and when some of that bigger stuff gets burning, it smoulders, or it reignites after you extinguish it, and that's some of the problems that we ran into last fall, and just filled that whole valley up with smoke. So, yeah, it can't, it's, it's an issue, and, but I'm doing my best to work with them to make sure that we can get rid of it in an effective manner, and hopefully without too much impact on the neighborhoods surrounding it.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
So basically, what this comes down to is, do we continue to work with them, as said, or do we disregard the desires of 1,000 to 2,000 taxpayers in that area that don't want that smoke in their house?
Well, if you follow the ordinance the way it's written, they can request a burn permit and have it be granted, just like any other, any other citizen in the community can burn it, and as long as they're burning it within the scope of the ordinance, they're not violating anything.
Hey, Gary, the only reason I brought it up was something in addition to what the ordinance is today, and if there was anything outside of how it is written to allow them to burn more longer for a given weekend, whether permitting or otherwise, if we were to have a majority that wanted to go down that path, or continue to follow the ordinance as it currently exists today. That's where I was bringing up from a discussion standpoint.
I suppose an option we'd have is to change the ordinance for the next six months, and change it back afterwards, you know, recognizing the fact we've had a terrible tornado in Dratch Show, and the cemetery, and our parks, and the golf courses are in a world of hurt because of it.
So I guess a question I would have, in the council's opinion, are we, are we better off to allow them to burn for 24 hours a day for two days, or three days, to get rid of it and be done with it, or do we, do we spread it out over six months to try and get rid, let them burn it a little bit at a time and get rid of it?
My personal opinion would be an extended weekend.
And it's dry, and we've had really high winds lately, so.
Well, provided that we are following what the ordinance says as far as dry weather and wind and all of that.
It's probably gonna be like perfect weather for opening windows when it's time to, you know what I mean?
I understand.
I don't know.
And I understand all the people that don't want the smoke in their house, and I understand their desire to try and get rid of it in a cost-effective manner. Understand all of that. all of that.
I also don't know how many burn piles there are, so I don't know if it could all be supervised 24/7 for that long weekend.
Currently, there's one, two, three, four, five, I believe they're down to six, six or seven piles of debris, but some of them are pretty good size.
And, and it can be manned, it can definitely be manned. We have a lot of water, we have a lot of manpower, and we have the volunteers.
Corey, I missed how many, the very, you trailed off, or I couldn't hear you at the very start, how many piles do they have out there?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, six piles, I believe.
Six, okay, thank you, yeah, I missed that. Anybody else have any suggestions? Yep, let's go ahead and open it to the public, you bet.
Jeff Schneider, 1906 Stratford Lane, I share a property line with the country club, I'm also a member. The smoke did not bother me, and actually, none of my adjacent neighbors did complain about it, they all understood the situation, so I don't know if it's just a few loud people complaining, but I think a lot of people understand.
Thank you.
So, in, in your opinion, better to have a long weekend and get it all done and...
Yeah, unless there's burn it and get it done.
Put it behind us.
Yes.
I think I agree with that.
Mark Eaton, 1207 South 12th Avenue. My mother lives on Country Club Lane. One of the largest piles at the country club is 100 yards from her house. I don't know how many members here are sitting on the council, but that, I would see a financial conflict, if you're a member, voting on this, because your dues are going to get affected by the cost of this cleanup. Second, Stratford Lane doesn't care when they burn, because it's at the top of the hill on the western slope, and the wind blows to the west, and the pile that they lit behind Stratford Lane, that smoldered for weeks because they couldn't put it out, it was a problem. It filled up the valley with, now, you're going to light a pile on fire to burn all the little stuff around, per Corey, and anything that's big, they'll haul away. I'm just going to mention a few things. Once you foam it, I don't think you can relight it, so we're done. Second, if you light those big logs on fire, and you try and haul them away, you're going to inflame them with the oxygen blowing over it. I know somebody who just did this last weekend, from a personal burn pile, and took, they were taking it to the dump, and when they got to the dump and they took the tarp off, the load lit up, so this is a problem. And Corey says, they can haul the big stuff away that doesn't burn. Well, that means they can haul the small stuff away, too. So, they can haul the stuff away, he said so, clear as day. So, personally, Gary, I think you should open the, the compost pile for some more time for dumping of debris, because there are still some of this. I just took two loads of the compost and paid that was left over from the Drachio that I couldn't get out before it snowed, so that's not a bad idea, and it helps everybody. But the people on the western side of the country club are going to have a huge problem with the smoke, so, thank you.
Your Honor?
Mr. Thompson?
I would...
If this body...
But I'd like to comment on that. Oops, sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead, it's hard to, hard to be heard if you're on the phone, but Corey, go ahead.
I would just like to comment on that, and, and, and yes, all of those comments made sense, except the, the whole concept of burning everything but the large stuff means we could grab the large stuff after it's extinguished, meaning that's one trip, to where if I haul everything from every pile, that's multiple trips, at which point, I'm crushing drainage, I'm crushing, crushing irrigation, and, and tracking up very expensive turf. So, just, just, just to clarify that, if, if I burn it down and extinguish with the foam, then yes, it cannot be reignited, which is great, because it puts it out, and then it would be one trip to grab the large stuff and get out and have less damage to, to the turf and the course.
Thank you, Corey, and Mr. Thompson, go ahead.
My fear is that this body is going to allow, is going to change the ordinance and allow this to happen, and I would ask that, if that truly is the case, that we contact Wandering Creek, the owners, and contact the Legion, and if you, if this body truly is going to have an extended weekend, then you might as well do them all at the same time, be burning all over town, let the whole town suffer. I hope this body doesn't do that, but, you know, rather than have this one happen one weekend, and the next one happen another weekend, and another one, and then, I don't know where we, where we draw the line, you know, how, how big or how small of a commercial entity do you have to be to, you know, I guess I didn't even know that, that Chief Ryerson had to grant burn permits, his way the ordinance is written, and that's shame on me for not knowing that. I thought they could be turned down, commercial properties could be turned down, so, thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome.
I do worry that other businesses are going to feel slighted.
Yeah? Where do you draw?
Well, you made an exception here, and, and I understand the country club's problem perfectly, I mean, that's a lot of trees, and a legion in that, I really do, but I think if you're going to start opening it up to, well, these businesses, well, why not that one, too? And then that one, too, and that one, too, and then we just kind of turned into a nightmare.
If I can burn rather than haul...
But you can now. I don't understand what, it's working, just let it work. If people ask for more permits, they ask for more permits. What am I missing here?
I, I think the country club went to Gabe, or someone went to Gabe and made the request, because they are not happy with the parameters that have been set by the ordinances, and they're asking to go outside of those parameters.
Correct.
So, I'm not really hearing that from Chief Ryerson, or from Corey.
Okay, I will, I can answer that.
That it's not, that they haven't worked out something that could have worked Sunday...
I'm going to...
Work a future weekend.
I'm going to throw somebody under the bus now, that we're getting into that, unless Chief Ryerson tells me not to.
Just, don't, don't...
They were not happy, they were not happy with what they were told from Chief Ryerson, and they went, it's my understanding, from a, from a fire chief in a small town, they contacted them to circumvent the system, to burn this stuff.
A lot of thems, we say, who, the Norwegians in our household, so, I, you know, the they, the thems, I don't know. Maybe I'm not getting the straight story, maybe I can't get the straight story in a public meeting, but I just, I'm not hearing that anybody is upset about anything, so I don't know why we're still here talking about it at 8:05.
Well, there were some complaints last, last fall, when, when the burning happened down there, so, so we went out there this year, and there are requirements that they have to fulfill. They have to notify all the neighbors around the course when they're going to burn, they have to, you know, they offered to bring in volunteer fire departments to man this stuff as it was burning, and I said okay to that. There's adequate water supply, if there's an issue, that they can, they can take, you know, take care of it. So I, I felt like, I know, I know Counselor Thompson's opinion is I should not have done that, but I looked at the situation, and is it beneficial for them as a business in the community? Yes, just like I've looked at every other commercial property or business owner in town that has asked for, asked for a commercial burn permit. So we gave them specific requirements that they needed to follow, and, you know, had the weather, had the weather cooperated on Saturday, or Sunday, we would have known if it was going to, if it was going to work out right, but the wind conditions were too high, and they followed the parameters that I set for them, and they didn't burn, didn't burn.
Yeah, yeah. So are we done talking about this tonight? Do we actually have to do anything, or can we finish this and go home? I don't understand what I'm being asked to consider.
Corey, correct me if I'm wrong, the ask is that you have an extended weekend to burn, rather than the current hours and constraints in place from a time perspective? That is what I, that's what my understanding was versus what is currently in place from a time perspective.
Could you hear that?
Yes, I would like to reiterate the fact, just two things, one, I would really like to reiterate that Chief Ryerson has been amazing to work with, we're working together, and if there is something with other people upset and, and, and not upset, and, and with the way we've worked together, I am unaware of any of that, but, I mean, we are in a small community. But yes, I, I think my biggest request would be, on behalf of the country club, that if there could be a little bit more leeway, regulated by Chief Ryerson, of course, on, on some extended times, I think we could get these piles knocked down quick.
So, Chief Ryerson, being the fire professional in our community, I would say, I would be willing, if you are interested in working with them on that, I am willing to let you make the decision on that, and I trust your judgment, I think you'll set forth reasonable parameters, and you'll keep our community safe, and if you think it's better to do like a long weekend burn, then have them pick and choose every nice day between now and September to get it done, I'm okay with that, and I would like you to have that freedom. And you can adjust that based on any, for any commercial prop, any commercial owner, you can adjust your permitting process as needed for Durachio and tornado damage, in my opinion. That's what I would like to see.
So the, the issue with that is, is it's contrary to our ordinance, and so that's where we're talking about, if that is something that you would like to do, is to have a special amendment to the burn ordinance to provide Chief Ryerson the ability to make a decision, or if you'd provide, you know, some other specifics that, you know, there's from this time to this time, that needs to be done by an ordinance, it can't just be entrusting him with that responsibility, because he would be acting contrary to the law that you have passed.
I'm fine with that. Then I think we should amend it and allow for the greatest flexibility for the chief. I don't want to put any times or parameters, because I'm not the fire professional, and none of us is. We shouldn't...
That, that could be made in the form of a motion to direct staff to come up with a proposed...
Just something to be clear, because this is, this is my employee.
Yep.
If he comes to me and says, I don't want to do anything different than what the ordinance allows, that is what you would be putting forward, and I think that's the political heat that I'm willing to take as his boss, is that if any of you had complaints about that, because he doesn't want to do it, even though you gave him the authority, I would totally stand by my employee.
Totally understand that.
And, and my suggestion was going to be that we direct staff to come up with a, a change in the ordinance that would allow a temporary emergency burn separate from what we've had in other years, because of what we've experienced, with the anticipation that probably in October, November, we'll take, take those amendments out and go back to normal, if that's possible, and it may not, there may not be four votes for it, but there may be.
Can we, can we still say that the chief, I mean, he's the one who has authority?
The chief's going to have to, the chief is going to have to handle whatever ordinance, if it's existing ordinance, he has to handle it now, if we change it, he'll have to handle that through the, through the summer and part of the fall, and...
Well, it'll have to be handled through at least June 30th, because then open burning stops again till fall.
Oh, that's right. Well, I suppose another option would be to have it, you know, if the wind conditions and it's dry, we have to go beyond that, the, whatever, small committee looking at trying to do a new ordinance or an amendment, the ordinance would have to take that into consideration, too. Not an easy task to, to give to city staff to come up with something like that, but that is one way to, one way to skin the cat.
And I would like to just defer that this is a political decision, that we are not the lawmakers, that we are the law enforcers, and that ultimately, we're enforcing what's on the books. So if you want to change what's on the books, that is up to you as a, as a political prerogative. I don't see that staff has a role in making recommendations when we feel that what is on the books is, is acceptable and working, and would prefer to do less open burning than more open burning. So, that would be where I would say, if they would like something done, I would prefer that there be a motion directing staff to develop an ordinance that has very specifically what your requirements would be, so that we know what it is you'd like us to bring to the next council meeting.
Point of clarification, Your Honor, does that ordinance need three readings, or just one?
An ordinance, it would need three readings, but it would not require a public hearing.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Well, anyone wish to make a motion to direct staff one direction or the other?
I'll put a motion on the table, so it either passes or fails, but I would make a motion to them in the ordinance with expiration June 30th for, and then I guess the ordinance to be written with regards to flexibility of the hours of the burn ordinance as written for commercial properties.
Okay, is there...
Yeah.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I guess we probably need to still call for comment, and, or, I mean, questions or comments by the council, and if none, then comments by the public.
Once again, if you're a country club member, you have financial ties to the outcome of this action, and you should not be allowed to vote on it, because it's a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Yeah, I think this is a good idea. Jeff Schneider, 1906 Stratford Lane.
Thank you. I guess we didn't unmute the phones for, did we? Let's do that, too.
The lines are unmuted.
Thanks. Let's call the roll.
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
No.
Martin?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Weirin?
Uh, yes.
Goudy?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
That is the end of that discussion, and that takes us to public comment, and so I need to read another proviso. Members of the public may make comments on any item not on the agenda during this time, approach the mic, state your name and address, limit the comments to three minutes or longer unless I authorize it, uh, if it's longer, and direct comments to me and the council as a whole, and we are not to engage in discussion or debate on items raised by the members of the public, and no action may be taken on them in order to comply with the open meetings law. Let's open the, unmute mics, open, unmute the phones, open the mics.
The lines are unmuted.
And count down 10 seconds.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make a comment, if anybody's driven out and talking a lot of development, Washington Street and some of the ground moving over there, it looks pretty slick, earth moving, and can't wait to see the new, new property start getting built, so...
I agree.
It's a, it's a nice street, and going to be some nice property.
Great, thank you for that comment. There are all sorts of really exciting things happening around town, going by State Street, watching the building coming up for the housing unit there is another one, too.
Yeah, I think we just, we just went past, through that on the development that we just discussed tonight, and, and also I can elaborate that we have a development on the Nottin' property, just north of the golf course, which is ongoing, and, and Washington Street, it's a, a lot of nice houses going to be built, and I, and I would apologize to some of these people, Meredith, especially, if I led him to believe that these were going to be grass huts or whatever. There was no intent to do that, because I, I was hoping that the developer was at least in line with a couple 200 to $300,000 homes, so I hope I didn't mislead them or misrepresent the developers in, in my comment, but, that being said, I was hoping that they were going to maintain that standard of living out there.
You bet, thank you. At 8:20 PM, we are adjourned. Thanks for coming.